All right, good evening. I see we've comfortably not only met a quorum, but eclipsed it by one. So that I think we are good enough to start. I'll check in with the city manager and see if everybody's ready on the staff end to begin our meeting.
Yes, we are ready to go.
Perfect. Well, with that, then I will welcome everybody to this joint meeting of the Katari Community City Council, excuse me, Katari City Council. And the successor agency to the former Katari Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, May 24. And this is our regular meeting. And I'm hearing an interesting echo too.
I'm hearing it also, Mayor.
Nice time delay of about thirty forty seconds maybe?
Yes.
Unlike most politicians, I truly don't like the sound of my own voice that much. We'll pause just a minute. We'll see if, we'll city hall, see if they can figure this out.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just give us a minute.
I'm hearing it also, Mayor.
Nice time delay of about thirty forty seconds maybe?
Yes.
Unlike most politicians, I truly don't like the sound of my own voice that much. We'll pause just a minute. We'll see if, we'll city hall, see if they can figure this out.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just give us a minute.
I'm hearing it also, Mayor.
Are we still hearing the echo?
We are.
And it's interesting, it's actually recirculating more than once. There's a feedback loop here. It's a long one.
Now it seems to have stopped.
Are we still hearing the echo?
It's a long one. And it's gonna turn off my camera and see the video.
Still hearing the echo?
Is it possible that it's coming through your own speakers back into your own microphone so that if you were to put headphones on it, it might stop?
Who are you talking to?
To Mary Landman.
No, this is typically how I would use this. These are small, the small speakers on the work iPad. The distance between me and is about two feet. There's no way we should have an audio delay like that. Plus, let me try it. I will shut it off. Ben, you are echoing, maybe speak a little. We'll see what happens, but.
Yeah, I can still hear it. It's getting lighter. I'm wearing it. The only two people who are unmuted are Kevin Patterson and the city council chambers. And it feels like it must be coming somehow via the, you know, the broadcast loop back into a mic somewhere.
Yeah, that must be it.
When I was much younger, I would have paid money for a pedal that could have done that for a guitar. But now, frankly, tonight, I'm just not interested. I don't want to jinx myself, but Ben, does it sound like you? We passed our echo time? I'm thinking maybe we got lucky. I'll ask staff if we think we're ready to embark on this meeting.
I think we are. Actually, we have a, Mayor, we have a presentation coming up from Phil Smith, the mosquito and vector control district. We're doing something different with YouTube to share a video and sharing sound. And I think that was the source of the echo we heard. We've.
I wouldn't be surprised because this, this is a new one. Well, this is how we learn things. So it's not necessarily a bad thing. So with that, I'm, so we've called the meeting to order and had a little excitement. I'm going to ask the city clerk if we can have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
And here.
And we'll show Councilmember Moore as absent.
All right. And with that, I will ask the city manager if he could introduce the staff members to the public that are here tonight to work with us.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and the public attending. My name is Damian Ovid. I'm the city manager. We also have John Barker, the city attorney with us tonight. We have Michael Parrish, the chief of police. Noah House, our director of community development. Craig Scott, our director of public works. Angela Quarter, our director of administrative services. Kevin Patterson, our deputy city clerk. Actually, Kerry Pahone is also here tonight assisting. Who is our permit tech with planning. And we have JP Harries, our senior planner here tonight as well. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, city manager Obid. With that, we're going to go to item three in our agenda tonight. I will ask you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item four. And this is the approval of minutes and notes of waving and reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted into this agenda. This is an action item. Tonight, we do have two items. We have our minutes from our regular meeting of the Katari City Council from April 26. And we also have minutes from our strategic planning special meeting in May 17. So I'll begin by asking the council if there's any corrections or additions they'd like to make to the minutes. And I'm not seeing any hands go up. All right. So with that, then we will go to public comments. If this is an action item, to see if we have anybody that wishes to comment on this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Well, bring it back to the council and see if we have a motion for this.
Move to approve the minutes for April 26th and May 17.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Harvey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Sparks. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. Okay, this brings us to item five, which is announcements. So bear with me. I have a few things to read. And I will begin by giving our meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules. The meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to find comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place in the agenda where citizens have a right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members may believe to be incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. And you can see details on the web at katari-city.org. Next. Citizens interested in receiving city of Katari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from either the iOS or the Android app stores, or by texting your zip code nine four nine three one two eight 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 seven seven seven. And finally, like always, we do love to hear from you. So please feel free to contact the city at seven oh seven seven nine two forty six hundred, or at info@katari-city.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at seven oh seven seven nine two four six one one. And of course, if you do have an emergency, please contact nine one one. Continue to look for updates from this on city's website and our social media channels, which are available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So with that, that brings us to item six. And we do have a presentation tonight. And I'd like to welcome our representatives from the mosquito and vector control district and turn this over to staff to welcome them as well.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. So tonight we have Phil Smith. He's the GM with Marin Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District as was announced. So before we start the presentation. Kevin, are we able to, well, are we able to get that YouTube video going, or should we? Or is that going to cause a sound issue again?
I have the YouTube up. I believe it may cause the issue, but we can give it a try.
Okay, well, perhaps we can play it and then take it down, take, you know, disable the sound after. And then before you hit play, wait one second. So Mr. Smith, if, if you're available, feel free to introduce yourself and then we'll get going.
I have the YouTube up. I believe it.
Great. Thank you and good evening, Mayor Landman, councilmembers, staff, and members of the general public. Thanks for the invitation to provide you with a brief update from the other side of town at the mosquito district about our activities and the services that we offer in the Katari area. If the technology allows, it'd be great to play this three-minute video that gives you a quick overview of our services.
Mr. Smith, I can guarantee about the first twenty thirty seconds will be fine after that. I think we'll just have to give it a try and see.
Very well.
Yeah, Kevin, if you can, YouTube video going and then we'll just disable the sound.
The Marin Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District was formed over a hundred years ago in San Rafael for the protection of the public. The district has since expanded to all of Marin and Sonoma counties. And we now provide a variety of services related to mosquitoes, ticks, yellow jackets, and rodents. Since we are funded by taxes and benefit assessments, anyone in either county can utilize our services free of additional charge.
The word vector refers to any creature capable of transmitting disease, producing discomfort, or causing injury to humans or animals. Each year, our team responds to more than forty five hundred requests for services related to not only mosquitoes, but yellow jackets and rodents. We use a scientific approach to vector control, commonly referred to as integrated vector management, or IVM. IVM incorporates five basic methods that include public information and education, surveillance, biological control, source reduction, and microbial and chemical control. This strategy allows us to protect public health using the most environmentally compatible methods to control mosquitoes in a wide variety of habitats. Do you have an unwanted furry visitor? We provide rodent control advice and inspections to any home or business in our area. Our specialists can locate the places where rats and mice can enter buildings and can recommend solutions to make your home or business less attractive to these destructive pests. Everyone knows that yellow jackets can be annoying at a barbecue, but encounters with these dangerous insects can sometimes be life-threatening. People are often stung by yellow jackets when they unknowingly get too close to a nest that is hidden underground. If you find the entrance to a yellow jacket nest, we can eradicate it for you so that you don't get stung. If you're looking for a pesticide-free alternative to managing mosquitoes in your water features, we can provide you with mosquito fish. These helpful fish thrive in ornamental ponds, water troughs, neglected pools, and other human-made water sources that are at least eighteen inches deep. A single mosquito fish can eat up to five hundred mosquito larvae in one day. Our lab staff works closely with our operations department to monitor and suppress mosquito populations through comprehensive surveillance. The lab also maintains colonies of mosquitoes that are used to evaluate the effectiveness of mosquito control materials and methods. We also collect ticks from various parks and publicly owned land. These ticks are tested for the causative agent of Lyme disease. Each year, more than five thousand local students experience our hands-on educational program, teaching them about the biology, ecology, and safety tips relating to mosquitoes, yellow jackets, and ticks. Teachers borrow mosquito lifecycle observation cages, and students get to watch the mosquito lifecycle up close without being bitten. Most importantly, students learn how they can help make their neighborhood safer from vectors, and they share what they learn with their families. The work we do at the Marin Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District plays a critical role in keeping families safe from vector-borne illnesses by utilizing cost-effective, environmentally responsible, integrated vector management practices. We encourage you to learn more about what we do, and if you have any additional questions, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Mr. Smith, I'll ask if you had anything you wanted to add to that video?
Yes, Melman, and if the display could be changed to the few PowerPoint slides, that would be very helpful. Great. Thank you. If you're ready, I'll proceed.
Certainly.
Yeah, as the video mentioned, our comprehensive integrated vector management plan, which is a little bit like an integrated pest management plan, but specialized, takes a tiered approach to managing vector species. And we stress education outreach and community relations as primary strategies. We enjoy good working relationships with the increasing number of organic growers and businesses, and also the beekeeping community. Next slide, please. There are about about twenty-two different species of mosquitoes found in and around the area, and the populations vary by season and locality. Of note is that the advent of climate change is causing a crossover and overlap in species that used to be separated by season and geography. Similarly, sea level rise and the attendant higher tides are forcing operational changes for our staff. We helped the designers of wetland restoration and creation projects to avoid the potential for mosquito production. So we have a seat at the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority in partnership with other mosquito districts ringing the Bay Area. And next slide, please. This apology is rather busy. Slide shows the known sources of mosquito production in the local area that we check regularly. And this is in addition to our on-demand, on-call service request work. The different colored icons are generated by our geospatial database, and it shows the type of breeding source and when it was last inspected. Next slide, please. This is the relative distribution of the type of service requests that's provided. We do a lot of mosquito work, yellow jacket work, and provide mosquito fish. And we get quite a lot of rodent controls. Over the last few years, we've been seeing an increase in yellow jacket call as because the colonies, perhaps due to the warming climate, have been very successful in overwintering and spreading a lot of the queens who are at the heart of the colony. Next slide, please. Of course, one of the main public health threats that we deal with is West Nile virus. And we test dead birds that are brought to our attention by the public and also samples of mosquitoes for the virus. I'm happy to report that no human cases have been reported for about the last five or so years in this area. We work closely with the public health departments around these issue issues. And one vector-borne disease is called St. Louis encephalitis, and that was displaced by West Nile virus in recent years. It's kind of curious how viruses sometimes compete with one another, and that's been making a comeback in certain parts of the state, but there are no local cases. Next slide, please. Black-legged ticks are found locally, and they can carry the bacteria that causes Lyme and other diseases. You'll see a picture there of the type of trail where they like to hang out on the tips of grass blades, technically known as questing, waiting for a host to brush by and pick it up. Ticks don't jump or fly. And the peak season for the adults is kind of later in the year. The nymphal ticks are out at the moment. And I'll say a little bit more about the nymph stage in the next slide, please. Perhaps it's cheating to have a person with a pretty freckled arm, but the nymphal stage of the tick lifecycle is really hard to spot. It's only about the size of a poppy seed. So we definitely recommend taking a shower after being out in nature, and that can help you find them and wash them off before they attach to you. They love to hide in the leaf litter and on decaying logs in wooded areas where you might like to sit and have your sandwich. And curiously, the little tiny nymphs, for technical reasons, have a higher infection rate than the adult ticks do. So we often feel it's pretty icky to get an adult tick on us, but the nymphs are actually the ones that we should kind of worry about. And their peak season is now and next month. Next slide, please. Sorry, the slide's a little busy. It's like it's slightly cut off, but the gist is that when our lab staff collecting test ticks for the bacteria that cause Lyme and other diseases, you'll see that it varies a lot by location. A quick takeaway is a little bit less than two percent of the adult black-legged ticks carry the Lyme disease bacterium, while about four and a half percent of the nymphs carry it. The causative agent calls called Borrelia miyamotoi, which is shown on the two rightmost columns as an emerging pathogen that can cause fever, chills, and headaches, as well as fatigue, body and joint pain. And it was found in a little bit less than one percent of the ticks that we tested. We're actually working a case right now, but it's in Marin County. And next slide, please. A public information officer drives a robust community engagement program that spans traditional and social media. Before the pandemic, we had a full-time education specialist who had a very popular program, giving classroom presentations to thousands of K to twelve students each year. The good news is that with the schools reopening, we're in person, we're currently hiring a person, and we hope to start that program up in the next few months. Next slide, please. Here's a couple of recent social media posts. One's about ticks. The other's a reminder that unmaintained swimming pools can produce vast numbers of biting mosquitoes that can affect an entire neighborhood when they fly off in search of a blood meal. And not to be sexist, but it is the females that bite to get the protein that they need to produce their eggs. So we contract to have satellite and overflight data, and we actually look for swimming pools that aren't being maintained properly, also spas and hot tubs. And technicians are really good local neighborhood sleuths. They can usually find out where mosquitoes are coming from. Slide please. A few of the challenges facing the district are the shifts, as we know, occurring in the climate. And with the changing weather patterns, we're finding mosquitoes well outside their normal seasonal distribution patterns. Last winter, we found species hanging on that would normally only be seen in the fall. And we're checking known tidal sources such as the tidal marshes. A lot of times when we talk to people about mosquitoes, they very astutely think of the backyard, whether the gutters are a little bit clogged, whether they should have tipped over a bucket or screened a rain barrel. But actually, Katari is surrounded by bodies of water such as Laguna de Santa Rosa and various marshes that are well within flight range of some rather nasty biting mosquitoes. So we do keep on top of working in the state and local refuges. As the last point on the slide mentions, non-native species of mosquito have been, you know, we refer to it as kind of marching their way up the Central Valley from Southern California. And they've reached the Maced area and also Placer and Butte counties. So far, they haven't made any forays inland to the coast area, but the informed speculation is that it will probably only be a matter of time. We're continuing to look for these trouble troublesome mosquitoes. They can carry dengue fever, yellow fever, Zika virus, and a rather nasty condition called chicken gonial fever. Next slide, please. We're constantly attempting to innovate to the district. We currently have a drone unmanned aerial system that we use to check for mosquito larvae and see which areas are wet. It saves us time, fuel, salaries, having the drone go out and fly and have a look around can also be environmentally preferable to driving in the truck or even walking or using an amphibious vehicle. Also, you might have seen around town, we recently kind of did a bit of rebranding and realized we were wasting a lot of white space on our vehicles. So now they have the hopefully eye-catching layout that you see there. And we've been getting good feedback from that. We tend to find that people don't know who we are or what we do, so really appreciate the invitation tonight to get the word, word out a little bit. Next slide, please. About our finances, we have about an eleven million dollar budget for the upcoming year. We're balancing the budget at the moment. It's about three percent less than the most recent year. And we have been able to fully fund our OPAB liability, which was a rather large amount back in 2013. It was thought to be around fifteen million dollars. And so over time, by prudently investing with the CalPERS affiliate programs, we've managed to fully fund that. We spent about twelve percent of our budget on pension costs, so we feel that that's pretty reasonable and under control, too. Next slide, please. We belong to the Marin County Pension Agency, which is a nineteen thirty seven act system. And that sometimes confuses people because we're up here in Snow County, but like many years ago, back in about nineteen fifteen or so, when the district was formed, the headquarters were in San Rafael. They eventually moved to Petaluma. Now they're in Katari, and we're kind of hoping that they'll stay here. Right. And we're finding that our pension costs are stable over time. We're hoping that they'll drop in a few years as we achieve full funding in that program, too. And we're noticing that with the influx of new staff. And we're noticing that with the influx of new staff, the portion of Peppera employees who are under the different benefit tier is increasing. So final slide, please. I think that wraps up my presentation. There's some contact information for the district. We're always happy to respond to you or your constituents, and I'm happy to field any questions if there are any.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith. Let me look to the council and see if any of us have any questions. I'm looking. Well, I certainly I see council over sparks. There's your hand. I just really quick. Going to comment tonight.
Really quick, I just wanted to thank you very much for this informative presentation and let you know, I did see the truck and it sparked a conversation with the people I was with, so it's working to get the message out there.
Great feedback. Thank you, Councilmember Sparks.
Yeah, I would like to thank you as well, Mr. Smith. I think that was an incredibly informative presentation. It's amazing how much you guys actually do. I will share that a few years back, I actually had an outreach from a constituent in part of town that had a had a rodent problem. And after talking to staff, we reached out to vector control, and we had a very happy constituent after that. So I was very pleased with the service. So I want to thank you for that, and I will say as far as your HQ, we're hoping you stay here in Cotati, too. That would be just great. So we've had a little discussion. So if I bring it back to see if there's any final comments or questions from council, I will open it to public comment because I believe we do have a couple of attendees.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you, and I'm going to come back and go right to Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and I was wondering if, Damian, it would be possible to attach somewhere on our website that video because I think it was really very informative for folks, if we could kind of display it somewhere, I think that that would be helpful.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, we can either attach the link or or link to their site where the where the video is. One or the other, we'll check it out.
Thank you.
Speaking of somebody who many years ago was dealing with a yellow jacket nesting on his property, it wound up with a sting that had my legs swollen in a frightening manner the next day. This is a good realm services to be able to offer to the public, and I think if they knew it was there, they'd certainly be in good shape to take advantage of that, so I certainly support that. So with that, with that completes our presentation for tonight. Thank you again, Mr. Smith. And we're going to move now to item seven, which is approval of final agenda. This is an action item, and I'm just going to basically ask the city manager if we have any changes tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
No proposed changes? All right. Well, I don't see any hands from council, but since this is an action item, I will one more time ask if we can check and see if anybody would like to comment about.
If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All right, we are back then to item eight. Once again, I have a little something to read to the public. This is item eight, citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I wanted to share that any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action in any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy, 2021-01 comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And as always, the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time when a disability accommodation has been requested. So I will ask the city clerk if we can open for citizens' business as well as consent comments.
Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Neil Hancock, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, council. Am I, I think I'm getting through. I just wanted to speak to the possible update to the Santero Way specific plan. It's I've been reading it recently because of various action items around. It's a 2001 document, and it's well before my involvement in the city processes. A lot of the input over the Santero Way, and that came before the Planning Commission recently, was from public input concerned with the informal parking. But I'd like to point out that there was no public input on speeding vehicles, and I thought it would be worth noting this because the design of Santero Way is what is being talked about with, I think, the Vision Zero process. So in order to get a few data points, particularly related to the informal parking, on Monday, the seventh at 7:00 PM, I went along Santero Way and counted the number of informally parked vehicles. And I came up with 59 and another 10 vehicles, so for a total just under 70, 10 vehicles in the no overnight parking, so just under about 70 vehicles that were in undefined informal parking areas. Now you'll see before you coming up on the Santero Way Cotati Station Plan that there's 90 new undedicated community parking places. So I think this is this is an area that's going to be covered. Partly, I want to just raise that with Santero Way that maybe the way for the future, the specific plan, if it gets updated, it will be to look at having any parking spaces that are to be countered as the ones that are not behind garage doors. So parking spaces that are out in the open. And that's a suggestion that I'd like to make for the for any future input or updates to the Santero Way specific plan. Vision Zero is asking us how to keep up safe roads, and I think we need to look at areas that are working. And I would just suggest that from a safety point of view, we have an evolving place that hasn't attracted a lot of complaints. So I think it could be considered to be working from a safe point of view. But it does take a lot of public input. So thank you very much. That's the end of my update. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Very good. Thank you. So I'll bring this back to the council for the consent calendar then. And I will ask, first of all, if we have items tonight, seven items, A through G. And I'll ask if any council member wishes to pull any item tonight. And I'll wait a second. I'm looking at the pictures I can see and the list I can see, and I'm not seeing any hands go up. So I will then look for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that. I couldn't.
Councilmember Ford by just the notes. Seconded by Vice Mayor Harvey. Thank you. Could we have a roll call load now, please?
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right, so that completes item nine. That brings us to item 10, which is direction on future agenda items. And I'll ask if we have any direction in future agenda items tonight from the council. And seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to our regular agenda. Item 11A, we're going to begin tonight with our police policy compliance review, and I will turn it over to staff to begin that presentation.
You, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight we have a couple guests with us. We have Jamie Lewis, who is, we'll introduce himself, but he was the technical expert that reviewed the police policies and compliance with the policies. And then Ben Orem is also with us tonight. And he is with George Hills. So with that, I will hand it off to Ben or Jamie, whoever wants to lead off.
I guess I can do that. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is James. Jamie is what everybody calls me, Lewis. I'm a retiree from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department after 31 years of service there. And I was asked to conduct a review of the existing policy and compliance with said policy over a few specific items with the City of Cotati Police Department. As way of background, my 31 years of law enforcement service included working in the jail system, working patrol, getting promoted through the ranks, serving in the court security divisions, the all the jail systems, investigations. I ran a patrol station where I had about 100,000 residents that I was responsible for. When I got promoted to Chief Deputy, I was in charge of our two jail facilities with about 4,000 inmates and over about 1,000 employees. That my my areas of responsibility included our civil process, our court security, our correctional health division as well. And then I ended my career about the last three years of my career as the undersheriff, which is the second in command for the sheriff's department in Sacramento. And in those capacities, you know, I've had a pretty significant breadth of experience, as you can imagine. And most notably, and I guess most helpfully for this process was, you know, my regular interaction and review of existing policies and or amending policies and also reviewing and conducting investigations administratively and otherwise. As the undersheriff in Sacramento, I served as the Skelly Officer, so I was the final link in the disciplinary chain before the final disposition that was ultimately passed off by the sheriff. So so I've got a great deal of experience in there, and what I was hoping to do and is kind of just go through this really quickly. I'm not, I didn't intend to read word by word. I think all of you have had an opportunity to see the the documents that we prepared, but give you kind of a brief overview and then open it up to questions and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. I will, just as a side note, if I start scratching uncontrollably, it has everything to do with vector control. I don't have any communicable diseases. It's just watching all those mosquitoes kind of gave me the heebie-jeebies. So to conduct this review, I took a good deal of time looking over the existing policies that are in place in Cotati. Those policies are provided by a company that is very well respected in the industry and frankly has a excellent reputation for providing policies that have been tested in courts. They follow best practices and they are routinely reviewed, which is an important piece of, of, I guess it's important to note because far too often, law enforcement agents agencies in particular have a tendency to develop policies and then they sit on a in a book on a bookshelf and kind of rot without routine review or somebody that has specific oversight to ensure that they they comport with what is currently case law. So to start with, that's a that's a really good thing for the city of Cotati is the fact that you you have a vendor that is providing a very high quality product that you can count on and that has been tested and frankly is is some of the best policy out there in the industry. And one note, too, that I would say before I get too far into this was I made the comment to the city manager and to the chief of police that it is oftentimes the case that a city or an entity that is asking for this type of review are the types of agencies that don't really need it. That that is to say that they've already taken a look inside and said, we think we're doing the right thing, but we want to be 100% sure that we are. And frankly, it's a tribute to the leadership in your city that you guys are doing as good of a job as you are because frankly, this is, there's nothing earth shattering in this report, nothing that would cause me to lose sleep. Minor adjustments that could be made, but those are adjustments that I I would submit are necessary in virtually every agency in the state, frankly. So it's commendable for you to reach out and ask for this review, and I think you'll be satisfied that that you're on the right path, so. Any questions before I get started?
Please go ahead.
Okay, good deal. So as I said before, I took a look at the existing policy and kind of the methodology was to look at, look at the key components of a few different policies that are some of the highest risk for, you know, danger to the community, danger to the employees and cause a likelihood of some kind of liability to the city. Use of force, vehicle pursuits, and then handling of property and evidence are on the top of the list, the types of things that law enforcement agencies face on a day-to-day basis that could find themselves in hot water in the event that they're not handling business appropriately. And and within those existing policies, I took a look at specific sections that I thought were notable and that are kind of universally understood to be the areas that you would really want to focus on to ensure that you're complying with existing policies. So as you read through the document, I kind of asked questions. For instance, the very first question is, does the Cotati Police Department have a current standard use of force policy? And the obvious question for that is yes, because Lexful provides a very comprehensive use of force policy that that outlines very specifically the actions expect and expectations of the employees within that agency. So that the policy is sound. The Cotati Police Department has that in place. It is readily available on the website. So the constituents within the city can access it and which is also a really important thing because that that level of transparency provides the confidence that is necessary for the officers on the streets to be able to conduct their business in a manner that is expected of them and that the citizens can have a good deal of confidence that they're they're acting within the four corners of their policy. There are a few little items within the use of force policy that I identified that either are maybe new or unique in that they are not something you would think about on a daily basis. So second, the second question talks into or goes into the use of force reporting that's required under government code. And while this is, it sounds onerous, it is really one of those things that is specific to, I guess, use of force incidents in which there's great bodily injury or death. And so that particular section of the government code and the policy that is written to, I guess, point back to that government code section is specifically intended to ensure that agencies are reporting to the Department of Justice those those acts that result in significant outcomes, injury or death. And so, you know, the narrow nature of that reporting requirement is such that in the city of Cotati, you've you've had no incidents within the period of time that I took a look at the incidents, you know, the last couple, two years or so. You had no incidents that were that met the criteria for reporting that to the Department of Justice. So compliance with that policy is is understood. You know, I I went into whether or not the officers within the Cotati Police Department are receiving ongoing training and what does that training look like? And I think, you know, there were, it's very clear that the initial training is absolutely in place and that the refresher training is on a routine basis and it complies with best practice. That training, you know, incorporates perishable skills training that happens on a, I guess, every two years. And then in addition to that, after my conversations with Chief Parish, it was obvious that there were notable improvements that they intended on making, which I understand they have produced a document that speaks to anything that I identified in this study that they felt was necessary to respond to. So I don't know if you want me to go into that or if Chief Parish will go into that. Damian, do you have an idea there?
Yeah, I think myself or Chief Parish could respond to any of those questions if the council has or the community has.
Okay, gotcha. One of the areas here was the appropriate documentation of incidents that involved force and there is substantial compliance in that area. And frankly, I was impressed by internal processes that were in place that went above and beyond what was expected in the policy and that is to say that there there is a specific form that the chief was able to produce that identified areas in which the supervisors routinely called out and filled out and had employees fill out forms that identified any instance in which an employee used force. And one thing I will say about the use of force, you know, use of force has a really wide definition. That is to say that putting, using a controlling voice is technically use of force. Putting someone in a control hold to prevent them from injuring themselves or injuring others is a use of force. Obviously, the use of deadly force is is a use of force, but it doesn't matter what the force is, if it's observed by a non-involved party, you know, a third party, as it were, any use of force could be considered to be shocking to the conscience. And so that's why it's really important for police agencies to document these types of events, how ever slight they may be, to be able to identify those cases in which they've used force and and recall those on a regular basis, you know, provide that information if necessary and use it as a means by which to train and to improve the performance of the people within the agency. And so this use of force documentation is a really good way to do that. It gives, it gives you a, something that is, doesn't require you to pour through a police report to find it, but actually highlights those cases and and able to really, you know, then dig into the weeds if it becomes necessary. So that that I thought was a really good addition to what is what is required by the policy. One of the areas that the that the agency had needed some improvement on, and that was in accordance with the policy manual, does the department have an annual review of use of force incidents? And it's very specific in the policy as to how they outline what that annual review should look like. And the use of force, use of force reporting forms was were was a medium by which you could conduct this review and the and the internal supervisors and managers did use those forms to look back and see what kind of uses of force were, you know, going on over an annual on an annual basis. But it didn't specifically, you know, go into the, I guess, into the weeds of what was expected of the policy, and I think there's some improvements that could be made there. The other thing was the use of force review board is is another often overlooked piece of policy. In other words, the policy specifically outlines that there is a board that is convened to look at uses of force and determine through that process whether there is needs, need a need for improvement in tactics and equipment and training and those types of things. And there is not a specific board in place currently with the Cattati Police Department, although I do know that there are steps being taken to convene such a board and to to come into greater compliance with that type, that portion of the policy. In the next section, I talked about the FBI's National Use of Force Data Collection Program. This is again, an area where, you know, you would be required to report incidents that involved great bodily injury or death. It is a strictly voluntary by the agency reporting process. And I just highlighted it in this report because I felt like if you are an agency that is as conscientious as Cattati Police Department is, it would behoove you, I think, to get on board and and voluntarily report this to improve the statistics for all of the law enforcement agencies that would have access to it. You know, the idea behind this is if we get a really good idea universally across the board with all the agencies in the United States, then maybe we can get a better picture of what's working, what's not working. And so by voluntarily putting that information into the system, I think you're you're showing a bit of leadership that would really bode well for Cattati Police Department. Having said that, there are no incidents that fit the criteria for this type of reporting that have occurred in the City of Cattati, so it may be a little bit of a mute point in that that regard. I went into whether, whether the police officers have been trained in conducted energy devices or other control devices and they're absolutely trained in those devices. They are not allowed to carry them if they are not shown to be proficient with them. There are specific training requirements, for instance, to carry a conducted, conducted energy device, which is by the brand name would be Taser. And ongoing training required as a result of that. I did highlight one of the things that we have seen in in not specifically in Cattati, but in the industry, cases in which police officers using, I'll just use the word Taser for, I guess, to make it simple, were intended to use Taser and and accidentally ended up using a firearm. And early on, I will, I will say that, you know, I, my career, because of the gray in my beard, I never carried a Taser, but they did come into use while I was working. And I can remember the early days, even in Sacramento, we had a case in which an officer carrying a Taser on their dominant side, meaning the same side that they carry their firearm, deployed a firearm expecting that they were using the Taser. Fortunately, it was not a significant injury, but still, you know, a completely avoidable mistake. So training now dictates that officers carry it in an offhand position and so ensuring that that is something that the officers are in compliance with is important and it can be easily accomplished through either an annual uniform inspection or just frankly just routine follow-up by supervisors on a daily basis. And I believe the chief has addressed that and actually has implemented some of those recommendations after we talked about that in this study. I think the last thing that I really got into, and it was, and again, these are all areas of the policy, the use of force policy that is produced by Lexful. And that is the management, supervisory management responsibilities relative to an officer-involved shooting. Again, this is one of those areas where you haven't had a lot of experience in this area, thankfully, haven't had a lot of experience in this area. But it's not, the time to learn what your responsibilities are is not the time, is not at the time of the shooting, it's well in advance of that. And so my recommendation was to seek out an appropriate vendor to to provide that type of training, to identify the folks that would be responsible for the scene and for the welfare of the officers involved, as well as the control of this, the scene and ensuring that the evidence is collected properly, et cetera, et cetera. It is likely that, based on the size of Cattati, that such an investigation would be conducted by a larger agency, probably the Sheriff's Department in some county, I'm guessing. And MOU is is likely in place to accommodate that. But in any event, it's important for folks that are on the ground, that would be the first responders to the scene, to be well versed in what their responsibilities are to ensure that there's nothing lost in an investigation, to ensure that everything is collected appropriately and and that it can be produced for further investigation, whether that be an internal administrative investigation, a criminal investigation or some other oversight by state or local agency. So, so again, I understand that the chief has has sought that out and is currently in the process of putting something in place to accommodate that policy. The next section I got into was vehicle pursuit. And I can tell you, Cattati is probably ahead of the curve when it comes to ensuring that they are on top of the policies relative to vehicle pursuit and the methodology by which you determine, you decide to engage in a pursuit or not to engage in a pursuit. Those are really important questions, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze? It's kind of the way that I would put it. And sometimes it is, sometimes it is not, but it's important to know when when it is and when it isn't and to have supervisors in place to be able to intervene in the event that it becomes necessary to terminate a pursuit or to pass it on to another agency because of changed jurisdiction or or one of those types of things. And then the reporting of a pursuit is also equally important. And the reason for that is, you know, before CHP became the repository for the outcome of pursuits, it was hit and miss as to how pursuits were being, you know, the outcome of a pursuit was being reported. And so oftentimes what would happen is law enforcement agencies would only report on those incidents that had catastrophic outcomes, you know, a crash or a loss of life or something to that effect. And so it didn't really capture the successful termination of pursuits and that's important to know as well because it's, you know, it's a data point that that we can look at and analyze to determine if our practices as far as engaging in pursuits or terminating pursuits are appropriate. And Cattati is absolutely in compliance with that and is currently reporting all of that information to CHP as governed by the Lexful policy and state policy as well. Ongoing pursuit driving training is also another thing that is often overlooked. It's critically important. I think it reduces the risk significantly to the employees, to the citizens and to the liability of the city to train officers appropriately and to ensure that that you have refresher training. Driving in a pursuit is far different than driving on the freeway, although I would submit that driving on the freeway sometimes is equally as risky as it is in a pursuit. But the the point is, is that you you need to be on top of of training because there are things that change. There are tactics that that through the review of catastrophic events or the review of successful terminations of pursuits, that training tactics change and and the idea in a pursuit changes and so it's important to stay on top of that as well. The last section that I I got into was property and evidence and I found the Cattati Police Department to be universally in compliance with the property and evidence policies with the exception of one area, and I'll get into that in just a second. But what was notable here is the consistency with which Cattati collects, processes, maintains, produces it for a court process and and I guess dispenses with old property. They're doing a fantastic job in that regard and even to the point that something that did not, was kind of new to me and I I submit that that's a result of, again, the gray hair on my beard and the fact that I've been retired for a period of time. But the idea that even a collection of narcotics has changed drastically from when I was working and I was a narcotics expert at one point in my career. You know, we used to conduct the presumptive test to ensure that the substance that we were collecting or that we were seizing and arresting somebody for was presumptively positive for the substance that we expected it to be, whether it be methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, those types of things. But with the advent of fentanyl, it produces and provides a degree of danger to anyone who has contact with it that really has caused agencies to take a deeper look at that and and decide whether, again, the juice is worth the squeeze. Is it is it important to have that presumptive test or can we rely on the expertise of the officers and the the, I guess, statements of persons involved, whether it be suspects or witnesses, to identify the substance with a good degree of certainty and allow trained personnel in a lab environment to conduct those tests? Cattati has chosen to forego the presumptive test out of a regard for the, you know, out of regard for the safety of the officers that are collecting those narcotics, which I think is a great step in the right direction. You know, fentanyl poisoning, as we've all seen in the headlines, is is part of the opioid epidemic and frankly, putting people at risk to conduct those presumptive tests is is probably not as important as it is keeping our employees safe. So they they do not conduct those presumptive tests anymore, which I think is a great policy. The the other parts of collecting and maintaining evidence are all pretty well in line with best practice and and consistent with existing policy. The one area that was in need of improvement, and that is the idea behind a routine and or, I guess, surprise audit of the property and evidence room. And it's it's understandable, frankly, that the agency is out of compliance with this particular part of policy because I submit that many agencies are probably in the same boat. It's a little bit of out of sight, out of mind. The policy is written in such a way to eliminate the likelihood that you'll be surprised by evidence missing or something to that effect well after the fact, which would make it difficult to investigate and determine, you know, the, how that evidence was diverted or lost or whatever the case may be. So to conduct this routine audit and inspection of the the property and evidence room, I think, is frankly a best practice and it's something that the chief and I acknowledged is is was out of sight, out of mind to this point, but he assured me that it is a high priority for them to come into compliance. And as I said before, I submit that I don't want to, I don't want to use any particular agency, but I happen to know an agency in Sacramento that is likely out of compliance with something like this as well, just given the magnitude of the amount of evidence that's collected and maintained in that agency's property warehouse. So that's the, I guess, the extent of what I reviewed as far as existing policies in those three categories. I did, however, make one other observation that I included in this and that was the the, I guess, significant steps that were taken to begin reporting RIPA data, which is Racial and Identit- Identity Profiling Act, that is, you know, required recording for vehicle stops and then reported to the state agencies to, you know, gathering and maintain in a database to help us identify agencies that are disproportionately involved in stopping people of color for reasons other than, you know, identifiable crimes and things of that nature. So in Cattati, the, they were required to come into compliance, the department was required to come into compliance in April of 2023. And if I'm not mistaken with the advent of the new RMS System Records Management System, this this information is currently being collected and well in advance of the deadline. So that's, again, commendable to take on that task and ensure that that information is being collected even before it's required under the statute. So all in all, it was a pleasure dealing with the the folks in Cattati, the city manager of the Police Department, all the staff in the Police Department. I was very impressed, frankly, and enjoyed the time that I spent there interviewing officers and staff. I find the agency to be run extremely well. And as I said, when I started, you know, it's a tribute to the leadership that you're asking for a review of this type of stuff well in advance of it becoming a problem because it shows the desire and willingness to be Because it shows the uh, desire and willingness to be as transparent as possible and to ensure that, that the agency is operating above reproach. And so with that, um, I'm more than happy to answer any question.
I'm going to just check in with the council. I'm sure we have some questions. I wonder if it would be helpful to have Chief Parrish speech, uh, speak to, he had some data points responding to some of the concerns were brought forward, how he's responded to them. Would we prefer to hear that first in case it pre-answers a few questions? I'm just looking for some head shaking maybe here. Vice Mayor, does that sound okay to you?
Yeah, I, I have just a simple question, so.
Would you prefer to go ahead with that right now for Mr. Lewis then?
Well, what my question is, is, is there a best practice for how often these type of reviews should be done?
That's a really good question. It is entirely up to the agency, uh, you know, an annual basis. A snapshot review, something to that effect. It's certainly not outside the, the norm, but is not necessary if the internal, you know, the folks that are running the agency and overseeing the agency are um, stand on top of it and ensuring that that uh, that the things are operating the, the way they should. This, this was unique in that I, I think uh, you know, the proactive nature of it is really a step in the right direction. And there could come a time when you want to look at some other aspects of the agency to see if that these, there are things that, that need to be reviewed. But frankly, with these particular categories, I don't see it getting off track, especially given the fact that uh, the chief and his staff have been able to take a look at the study, respond to any areas that, that were identified as uh, needing improvement and, and really, you know, I think in, in an annual report, they'll be able to cover the improvements that have been made, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right then. And that's almost a perfect segue, Mr. Lewis. Then just to jump over to Chief Parrish and let him quickly just speak to the points that you brought up, which I know, I, I understand from his comments and from your comments that he's already either implemented or working on implementing. But Chief Parrish, I, I'll let you speak first on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as far as uh, evidence goes, uh, moving forward whoever inspects the evidence room, it's not going to be a repeat of the same personnel. So my plan is to um, do periodic inspections of evidence as Jamie recommends. However, it won't be the same person doing the inspection every time. So in other words, I'll mix up the personnel who do the inspection for additional oversight. I had a recent conversation with Jamie about that. He thought that was a, a great idea. When Jamie was here, I had a question for him was actually um, Carrie Peoples is the custodian of evidence. And I know he spent a great deal of time with her over evidence, which is important. A concern I had was taking large amounts of evidence, um, meaning it's a, it's a, it's a weekend, we get a large amount of evidence, for example, from a catalytic converter theft investigation. So there's like, there's catalytic converters that have been stolen, there's jacks to jack up cars, there's sawzalls to cut mufflers and all that. Just massive amounts of evidence. And we weren't doing a good job with that frankly, um, as far as chain of custody. And so I worked that out with Jamie and we have a plan now to, over the weekend, have a better way to secure large amounts of property. Um, that way, when Carrie um, arrives here on Monday, there's a better chain of custody. So that's the improvement that I saw with um, Jamie's visit to the police department regarding evidence. Officer involved shootings were mentioned, so if that occurs, um, that would be the sheriff's office or Santa Rosa Police Department. That is a, that's a chief's protocol, that's the Sonoma County Law Enforcement Association, that's a chief's protocol that's in place. Sometimes that includes Petaluma as well, able to do the, that investigation. But however, right now I don't think they have the bandwidth, they've had a lot of turnover. Um, and so right now it would be Santa Rosa or the sheriff's office conducting the criminal investigation of an officer involved shooting. And then the Katari Police Department would be in charge of the internal um, investigation portion of that, which we would outsource. Um, the tasers were mentioned. So we, we, we do inspections all the time, basically at lineup. Because as Jamie mentioned, unfortunately, um, peace officers in, in the United States have drawn a firearm, thinking it's a taser. And so we're on top of that. So we do basically the sergeants or corporals at shift change are watching for that. So we could have an officer change their gear, right? So they could go from having their taser on their left leg, if their firearm is their dominant um, side and they got their firearm on their right leg. They may, they may have a change in uniform or equipment where now they put it on their, their vest. And so we watch for that because that's really, that's the last thing we want to happen. I think we can all agree on that. As far as uh, pursuits go, um, I agree with Jamie. I think we do a good job of that. I will share with you that the last pursuit we had um, was terminated and our Katari officer um, followed up with an administrative warrant and safely towed back car on a later day. Um, which makes the chief happy when I see things like that. As far as use of force, yes, uh, Jamie's correct, we did go to a, a form. Which I'm going to talk about tonight on the annual report. We did migrate from a paper form to an actual records management system in uh, September of 21. So we, so we are covering that. And per um, per a council recommend, recommendation. Um, this would be Dell Allen, counsel. He has recommended that we review all use of force beyond simple handcuffing. So, thank you, Mayor, and uh, thank you, Jamie.
All right, well then I will now come to the council and see if we have any questions from the council. Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand first.
Thank you so much and thank you for, for the, the report, it was really informative. I'm glad to hear that we're doing so well overall. I just had a couple detail questions. Um, one was relating to the deadly force review board. I just want to make sure I'm um, understanding correctly. So it sounds like we would, if that were needed, we would outsource it to a different to either a consultant or something like that or a different agency. I just wanted some um, clarification on where we would send, who, who would, who would be responsible for the the piece of the deadly force review board that's in policy? And also Jamie mentioned that um, the deadly force review board, like the membership and the the uh, composition and the duties of that board are clearly outlined in policy. So I'm just curious if, if we're not actually convening that within the city, if we're outsourcing it, do, do we need to adjust um, the policy manual to just have it reflect our current practice on that? Um, so that's one question. And then um, my second question was going forward, since we have an in policy uh, a use of force annual report that's sort of spelled out that it needs to contain the training, equipment and policy requirements um, that are identified as a result of reviewing the use of force incidents. Um, I, I, I'm really grateful to the, for the, to the chief for the very nice list of use of force incidents that's included in our annual report. But I didn't see that other piece of it sort of included right there with use of force, which is training and equipment and policy requirements sort of based on that review. So I'm wondering, um, in future years, will, will we come into compliance with that part of our policy by including that in the annual report too? Or are you thinking of doing like a separate annual use of force report? Um, those are my two questions, thank you.
So I, I can answer the issue of the deadly force review board. So that in, in the event that there's an officer involved shooting or uh, an officer involved death, there are a few things that happen. First of all, as the chief indicated, the agency that would, would be responsible for the investigation will conduct a what would be considered a criminal investigation, meaning they'll come out and collect evidence, secure the scene, uh, do the interviews, those types of things. And then that information would be submitted to the district attorney's office to determine whether or not prosecution efforts were necessary or whether the officer's actions were exonerated, et cetera. The, the actual review board following that particular process would be an internal review of the event to ensure that that the, and it's kind of an administrative investigation frankly, to determine if the officer's actions were appropriate and consistent with policy. And so there are parallel investigations that would be ongoing. And so, you know, putting folks together to do that um, would be is, is easy enough to do. You have supervisory and management staff in the agency that are capable and, and have the experience necessary to do that. Just pre-identifying those folks and preparing them for such tasks is really all that would be necessary. And as far as the reporting of that, a lot of that information, and frankly, would be uh, council would have to dictate exactly how much of that information would be public record and what would be um, considered to be attorney-client privileged, you know, work product within to ensure that the um, that you can make those, those corrections without being subjected to things in the civil process that you wouldn't want to be subjected to. I can't speak specifically to that. I'm not an attorney, but I do know that a lot of times attorneys are involved in that process so that you could, you can develop comprehensive policies and, and protect the agency at the same time. And it's, it's kind of like a peer review of the event to ensure that you are, are doing the right thing and that that the policies are solid and in place and that the equipment and training is appropriate for the, the task that was that, you know, that was involved. So, so that's, that's as far as that goes. And I, and I'll speak to what, what I've seen in other agencies relative to use of force, reporting uh, and changes in training and those types of things. Annual reports, I think, are probably the most appropriate uh, public documents for that type of information. It's a, a way to be transparent and identify things that you, you've uncovered over the year. And providing that information in an annual report is certainly appropriate. It may, it, it may not be an annual thing, however, you may just be able to report on events that have occurred and that were within policy. And again, they're just uses of force that are within policy. So it may not require anything that needs to be corrected necessarily, it's just information that's provided.
Can I ask one follow-up question?
Sure. I think that's fine. I thought you wanted Chief Parrish was supposed to speak to um, the use of force annual report regarding training, equipment and policy to Councilmember Sparks?
Sure.
Let him do that and then, and then go for the other question.
Well, I would like to um, well, tonight I'm going to um, talk about use of force uh, in the annual report. And I would say that for the next annual report, if council is looking for more information um, and I could provide that, I would be happy to do that. Then as far as the, the board on the reviewing the use of force. So the way I interpret it, I'm also allowed to not just, it's not just going to be internal to Katari Police Department. I could have, if, I could have the Sebastopol Chief on the board or other agencies, right? And that board, they're going to be looking at sensitive information that's, that's um, under criminal investigation by the district attorney's office, for example. That is, the, uh, the peace officers protected by a peace officer bill of rights. Um, so that is very sensitive information that that board will be looking at. And I think that was Jamie's point to that.
Thank you. That, that leads right into what my follow-up question was, which is um, I think the policy review said that the composition of that board is outlined in the policy. So I'm just wondering if what you're describing, Chief Parrish, um, exactly matches what's in our policy? Or do we need to update the policy to come into alignment with that practice? That was my question. I, I was trying to dig through the policy manual right now and find it and I, I couldn't quite find the.
We could, I, we, what I could do is, in the policy is identify, like I just um, described, identify the makeup of the board. I can do that. I guess, and I don't want to, man, I do not want to jinx Katari, right? But we're in a good position where I've never had to enact that board. Um, and so I think that's part of it is we've never used one. But I have no issue identifying a board before something bad happens.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I was going to say just for clarification that uh, I don't have the policy sitting in front of me, but I don't, I don't remember it specifically identifying positions within the agency. And so I think the composition of that board, as the chief indicated, could be a number of, a number of folks from other agencies or whoever is most appropriate for reviewing that particular incident. And that could change based on the circumstances of the incident, right? You, you may need someone to review something that involves officer involved shooting and you may need to review something that involves a serious bodily injury or death or you know, something to that effect using a vehicle or, you know, any other, other scenario. So um, so I think it's important to have the flexibility to add the, the folks that would be most appropriate for the task there.
I just, it might be helpful to the discussion. I actually did have this printed out for our last meeting when we unfortunately had technical difficulties and didn't get to have this discussion. But there are about seven positions, I, I won't read them all because most of them would be uh, local uh, officers and supervisors. But one position is a sworn officer, peace officer from an outside law enforcement agency. I can imagine that could be officer of any rank from an outside law enforcement agency. Uh, another mention is, uh, let's see. That a senior ranking command representative who's not in the same division as the involved employee could serve as chairperson, in theory. An outside person may certainly not be in the same decision. You may, the chief may want to use an outside person to chair the meetings too, just to help go or going. But the, the rest of it uh, is, I will read it real quickly so we all know. Representatives of each division, commanding officer in the involved members' chain of command. Lieutenant, non-administrative supervisor, a peer officer, a sworn peace officer from an outside law enforcement agency, and the department instructor for the type of weapon, device or technique used. And finally, they mentioned that somebody who's not in that person's division should serve as the chairperson. So that's what they have in there. If that, that helps at all. All right. So anything else, uh, I'm going to look one more time here and refresh this. Councilmember Ford, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Lam. Yeah, I had some um, higher level questions for Mr. Lewis, primarily because this is a field that I'm no expert in and I just want to understand the landscape. And um, so you said, Mr. Lewis, that Lexington, you, you say is very well respected and, and produces the best policies. And I'm just curious what, sort of what measure, by what measure you, you ascribe best prac, best policies to their policies? Like what matters to you in calling something the best policy?
Well, what's, what's really important is that it is um, it is generic enough and specific enough at the same time to guide the actions of an officer in the field. In other words, it doesn't, it doesn't tell you, okay, put your key in the door and turn it to the right to open the car door to get in. Um, but it does give you enough of a, uh, understanding of what the, what the expectations are of you to be able to conduct your job on a daily basis. What's, what makes them really quality is the fact that they are routinely reviewed by staff within. by staff within Lexington and most of which is of a legal has a legal background to stay current with current case law, best practices, make amendments, have case law changes and or law changes, which happens quite frequently. And and so what that does is it relieves the agency of the burden of trying to maintain those things and having staff specifically assigned to reviewing those policies and making those changes, you know, on their own. It's a very burdensome task, as you can well imagine. So having it done for you and being confident that they are staying on top of things and that the policies frankly have been tested in court and that have stood up to the test. And if if there were changes necessary as a result of a test, in other words, they found a policy to be, you know, not detailed enough, inappropriate, whatever, they make those changes right away and and fire that off to the agencies that are subscribing to the service right away. In addition to that, they produce training information that helps you get the policies in the hands of the folks that are most important. In other words, the folks that are on the street, the first contact type individuals, patrol officers, folks in dispatch center, those types of folks that have the regular contact with the community. And so it gives you a little, if a new policy comes out, you can be trained on it right away. And it doesn't it's not like you have to go back and read the policy manual every year or every month or, you know, whatever. It's a that that training module helps.
Right, right. They don't just slip the changes in there. They tell you about them.
That's right, exactly.
Good. Okay, thanks. That's helpful. So the the policy development and change process, is it fair to say it's primarily driven by changing law and court cases that that change the parameters?
Yes, yes, mostly. In fact, I would discourage, you know, if if someone were to ask me, should we change what is in the policy to better fit what our current practice is or something to that effect? My answer to that is not unless it's absolutely necessary. And the reason for that is because minor changes in policy that we think are important for our particular agency may not be consistent with what is in case law or is not going to be maintained at the same level as it would be if it were generic policy produced by Lexington, if that makes sense.
Yeah, sure. No, I certainly get the advantage and it's, you know, we often complain about loss of local control and essentially subscribing to Lexington means a loss of local control over our police policies. But that's not that's not something I want to take on. So I but it is a bit of a trade-off. And so so one thing that I just I wonder about is whether Lexington has people who look at policies from a perspective of building community relationships and trust and trying to avoid bad outcomes in the first place rather than just avoiding legal liability for those bad outcomes. And that that sort of question about what constitutes best practice is something I would like to understand better about Lexington, because all the talk I hear is about reducing legal liability and risk to the city in the event of, well, I mean, hopefully, we're trying to prevent bad bad occurrences. But but the the sort of the story that's out there that I hear is all about being able to point to a policy that said the officer acted the way the policy said and not how do we reduce bad outcomes? And I just wonder if there are people at Lexington who are actually trying to figure out how do we sort of repair? We have good police community relations, I think, in our city, but I think there's this broader, you know, societal dialogue about police and and society that that I it the dialogue isn't what I like. And I would like there to be more talk about how do we build trust and build relationships? And I think policies need to reflect that. So I'm just wondering how Lexington goes about that, if you have any information on that.
You know, I can't speak specifically for Lexington, but what I can say is that by having sound policies and that are not wishy-washy, that are pretty well identified and use what we have identified either through adverse outcomes or through changes in case law or through, you know, I guess, better practices based on circumstances that, you know, have been reviewed. Having those types of policies in place really is a huge step in the right direction in improving community relations. It frankly instills confidence in the community that you are staying on top of what is changing within the industry and and proactively making adjustments to the agency to ensure that you're complying with case law. You know, frankly, case law changes as a result oftentimes from an adverse outcome or from some egregious violation of someone's rights or, you know, someone acting completely out of out of policy, for instance. And so the that case law, you know, staying on top of the changing case law will go a long way to speaking to your concerns about building community relations. It is no substitute, however, for the agency to be engaged in those types of activities as well, which Cattati is very much active in trying to maintain its solid community relations. After my conversations with the chief and with the city manager, I know that that is a high priority for them. And it is evidenced by the way that they conduct themselves and frankly, the the willingness to be introspective and take a look at what it is they're doing and ensuring that they're doing it the right way. So, you know, you're a you're a step ahead in that regard, for sure. But there's no policy that substitutes the the need for active on a daily basis, positive community relations between the agency and the constituents, for sure.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that. It looks like Chief Parrish wanted to respond as well.
See, and I just saw Chief Parrish's hand go up. Chief Parrish, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So to Jamie's note, the changes in laws right now, so not just constitutional law, but in the past two years, I'd never seen so many assembly bills and Senate bills regarding policing, right? And it's hard it's hard to keep up with with this. And luckily, we do subscribe to Lexington to keep up for us. And then your question, Councilmember Ford, regarding the the staff knowing about the changes in policy. So they're actually through the system, through Lexington, they are emailed the change in policy, and then they have to read the policy and then acknowledge that they have read the new policy. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And one final question for Mr. Lewis was just about your review process. In other circles, I I sort of, we talk about homeless policy, and it's become standard practice now, if you're talking about policy in the homeless world, to include people with lived experience of homelessness in in those reviews. And I'm wondering, in the law enforcement world, there's there's a lot of concern out there that that the only people policing the police are the police. And I wonder if you ever include people who have been on the other side of law enforcement interactions in your review of police policies? And if you if you think about that, that seems like a valuable point of view to to, I don't know, somebody who was stopped and turned out not to have any reason to be stopped, it would be interesting to know what their point of view is on how that interaction went and how that how policy interacted with that interaction.
I have not included members of the community, although I understand where you're coming from in that regard. You know, there in Sacramento, we did have groups that we met with on a routine basis to discuss those types of things. What I will say is that the type of review that I conducted here was to ensure that the agency was complying with policy as it is written currently, not specifically to to get into the efficacy of the policy as it relates to the interaction with the community or folks that may perceive that their interaction is adverse or otherwise. You know, as I pointed out, the proactive steps to collect racial profiling data for vehicle stops and encounters is a step in that direction, frankly, and and speaks to the commitment to identify those interactions, to ensure that they're being conducted appropriately and that there are no bad actors within the agency, because they'll become very obvious very quickly, right? And so so I think that's a step in that direction. And frankly, the the data that's collected there will be telling. The other thing that you'll note, too, is that when the when you collect use of force data and you analyze it, you'll find, I guess, trends involving the the community, right? So if there are specific encounters that result in a particular set of actions by the officers, those will become very apparent very quickly. And then it gives the administration there the opportunity to conduct more detailed administrative investigations to identify those trends and to see if there's something, you know, behind the scenes involved here that needs to be corrected, one way or the other. And that that's the benefit of collecting that type of data. And frankly, the chief has already taken steps, you know, more than adequate steps to do that. And now it's just a matter of analyzing the data and identifying those encounters and ensuring that they are all above reproach.
Thanks very much.
You bet.
All right, I'll look one more time to the council. I had a couple, I've not seen any other hands right now, so I had a couple of quick questions for you, Mr. Lewis. First of all, thank you very much for being here. Let's see, let's make sure we actually have the right piece of paper here. You can never see somebody's desk on Zoom, but usually there's papers all around, especially if you're chairing a meeting. So you have a very impressive resume and obviously a clear subject matter expertise. And and I have to ask this question not because I have deep personal concerns, but it's a fair question, and I think many members of the public just looking at this from the outside. And indeed, I actually was raised very well earlier that there's this aspect of the police policing the police. So I wanted to ask, this expertise does come from a long career in law enforcement. So as some might have some concerns about, I wanted to ask you to kind of speak to that concern and perhaps share some work history or examples that might counter that expectation, if you could?
Absolutely. So, yeah, I have an extensive background in the administrative investigation arena. And that is to say that the police policing the police, that would be an administrative investigation, right? An internal investigation. And what I've always said is there are there is no better entity to police the police than those that are operating within that arena. And the reason I say that is because there's there are no law enforcement officers, I truly believe this, that there are no law enforcement officers that want bad actors amongst them. And we and our our full intent is to weed those folks out and to ensure that they don't compromise the confidence that the community has in the rest of us. In my capacity as the chief deputy of corrections, I've reviewed and conducted hundreds, several hundred administrative investigations, wrote recommendations for a wide gamut of discipline to include terminations. As the undersheriff, I sat in the Skelly hearings and and heard the defense of officers involved in administrative investigations and wrote recommendations that included all the way up to termination and and frankly, unfortunately, had to be the the voice that that was responsible for terminating officers for engaging in behavior that is just completely inconsistent with the mission, vision, and value of the organization. I have worked extensively with the community. You know, I had a patrol station that that serviced about 100,000 residents, and I had an annual, I'm sorry, I had a monthly meeting with the community to address any concerns that they had with our service area and the officers that were that were operating in that service area. And so I convened boards within that community to discuss community relations and to build the trust in the officers that were out there working and identify areas that we can improve and and made those improvements to ensure that we could be as effective as possible and that the community could have the confidence in us that we were operating in an appropriate manner. And then dealing with those cases in which we we stepped out of bounds, and it happens. So again, I I would submit that there is no better, no better entity to police the police than than the police themselves. And if if for some reason, you know, something falls through the cracks in that regard, the there are a whole host of agencies, you know, up to including the Attorney General's Office that can conduct investigations and deal with things that are occurring within individual police agencies that need to be addressed on a grander scale. So, you know, an officer's conduct is not solely viewed through the prism of those that work around them, but also through, you know, more critical eye of the district attorney's office, the Attorney General's Office, and beyond. So I hope that answers your question. If not, I can expand further if necessary.
No, I think that gave me the background I needed to hear. Thank you. And and one more quick one, because I know you've had spent some time with this tonight. And this is just more from my education, because actually, for for us to do our job in oversight, the part we play in that, like, one of the things we talked about tonight was the review board, the deadly force review board. And it was noted on page 46 of, at least, the original packet, that that we're out of compliance, or was in a small issue, that we did not have a review board as outlined, et cetera. Yet when I read the manual on this, it says that the administrative sergeant will convene the board as necessary. So if I had not heard from you, if I read this, because it says the administrative sergeant will convene when necessary, and then it goes on to describe the composition of the board, I would have thought, okay, we're fine. We have the process. We know what we need to do. I mean, I could see the argument for training, but I also know, looking at the way the composition rolls, that we could name a board, but heaven forbid, if the time ever comes that we have an incident, I would imagine we're going to be changed, we're going to be convening that board constantly, because people will be changing, hopefully, more often than we need to use them. So what am I missing here? Explain to me the value of pre-vetting, would it be training?
Well, yes, it would be, because ultimately, what that board would be responsible for is examining the circumstances, the tactics and techniques, the equipment used in whatever the event was. And so to have some understanding of, you know, to ensure that that everybody on the board had a role in that, as far as understanding and identifying their particular area of expertise, it would, ahead of time, would help to expedite the process and make it a little more efficient, I guess, is ultimately what it is. You're right in saying that the just just having the administrative sergeant, I mean, that's a that's a person, that's a position, but it is a person. And giving them a responsibility to convene the board, they could do that pretty quickly, frankly. You know, you could identify subject matter experts, whether within the agency or outside the agency, to come together and review the circumstances. And it's not something that's going to happen on a routine basis. It's going to happen typically when you have cases that require it. And so, you know, normal mundane may not be the appropriate way to describe them, but, you know, routine uses of force may not require a review from from a board. It's going to be a more significant use of force or a set of circumstances that requires a little closer look at the tactics that were involved. And and I just, I'm of the opinion that having folks identified ahead of time as, okay, hey, you're a subject matter expert in this, in the event that this were to occur, you're the type of person that we would call upon. And having, you know, Rolodex, Rolodex, that that really dates me, I'm sure.
It's okay, I knew the term, too.
Okay. A Rolodex of folks that you could call upon under those circumstances would be helpful and and make the process far more efficient.
That that makes sense to me, explaining that way. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Well, we've had a chance to ask a lot of questions. Why don't we break now and see if the public has any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this report. Good evening. Thank you very much, um, for this report. Two, two things. One, um, it was, um. Good to hear that our police department is in pretty good shape. Chief, our, our chief of police is sticking to his word. Thank you. You said you would start doing the RIPA reporting this year and you have. That's wonderful. Folks, I am a visual learner. I have sat here and looked at this screen and it says, direction on future agenda items, regular agenda action. Police policy compliance review. I saw nothing of the report that. Jamie, I can't remember your last name, but I'm going to call you Jamie because everybody else has. But there was no summary, there was nothing for me to look at. So that I could remember and form my own, um, linkages. I don't know what happened, but please, for those of us who come to meetings, continue. To show us on the screen summaries of the reports that are being made. It really does help. Bottom line on this report, I'm glad it happened. I'm sorry it happened quite like this, but thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Patterson. Good point. Appreciate that. We do have the data that was originally part of the original packet and I believe it's on the council's website now for download. Perhaps you could ask the city manager if it's okay with Ms. Crump Shears just to forward that to her. While it's all fresh and you can review it if you'd like, of course, and, and point taken, it would have been nice to have. A few slides to look at as we're going through, uh, because it's good to see something while you're listening to, we do learn better about it. So bringing it back, this is for review and discussion, so I will. Open this back up to the council again and see if we have any further discussion, anybody would like to make. Council member Sparks, I see your hand first.
Thank you. Um, I just want to reiterate how pleased I am to, to have this, uh, information in this report. And thank you, Jamie, for, um, for coming and sharing this with us tonight. I, I wanted to, uh, just make a comment on one of the statements about Lexipol. There was, I totally understand the need to be very cautious if you make any changes to what comes in from Lexipol. Because it's been, that policy has been vetted against case law and, and against changes in. And recent changes in law and it's all up to date and so you have to be careful when you're making changes. But, um, I attended a training. I guess it was a, a public workshop in which there were representatives from Lexipol describing. The way the service works and describing best practices. And, um. They stated that the best practice is for local communities to engage with the policy and, and customize it to their own needs. So what we heard in terms of, you shouldn't make any changes to the policy from Lexipol is at odds a bit. With what I heard from Lexipol's own representatives. So I just wanted to make that comment that I, I do think it is appropriate in some cases to, uh, for the community to customize Lexipol to meet our, our needs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
I was wondering if it would be possible based upon the comment that was just made by, um. Council member Sparks, if Chief Parish could, uh, reach out to Lexipol and get some better information on that. I would hate, I mean, I can't even imagine the number of staff that they have looking at. Assembly bills and senate bills and court cases. And I mean, we would have to have probably a team that's bigger than our whole police force. So I'd like a little bit more information about that. The chief could, um, check with Lexipol, because that's interesting information.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll look one more time through the council. Yeah, I had a few comments. First of all, this is kind of exactly what I had hoped for. Last year when we were beginning to discuss how we could improve what we do in terms of oversight of what we do here in terms of law enforcement in Qatadi. Our role at least in this council members and as a community frankly. And I was hoping we could get to some sort of mechanism for a regular process of looking at and having at minimum incremental improvement. Hopefully even larger improvement. You know, normally when I would see a report like this, Mr. Lewis, if I saw us getting a few checklists of things we need to do better in. I would be disappointed, but actually for this particular process, this is what I wanted to see. This is the value of initiating something like this, because we can find things, even if they're small things with the evidence locker, for example. We can do a better job this way, and I think this sort of process will be valuable going on. Somebody did ask, I believe the vice mayor asked about how often is it best practice to do this? And there was a suggestion, it could be as often as the annual or biannual. I would certainly be open to that, that, um, somewhere in that timeframe should make sense to me, uh, because I do think there's a lot of value in it. We all know how it is to have an outside eye come in. How many of us have prepared? In our professional careers or even for council, a document and gone over and over and over, when you bring an outside eye. Usually another family member and they look at, they'll find a glaring error to or a simple omission. That you didn't see because you've just been too close to it. And I think that's the value of doing this. So, uh, just for the record, I, one thing we didn't talk about, it was a suggestion, I believe. In our use of force reporting forms, there's somewhat officer initiated. And you praise the process, but suggested it would be good to have the, the, excuse me, uh. Management, as it were, sergeant lieutenant driven. That it would be a good idea for the patrol officers themselves to initiate this, and I would agree. I think that there's an expectation that our management, that the police department are going to be going over this, looking for this. And the officers know this, they should be flagging things to make this easier for their supervisors. If that's the culture of our department, it should be something we do, uh, to see. I still expect that the sergeants and lieutenants and the chief will have to look over this. But I think it would be important for us to get in the habit of flagging that. And perhaps it makes the job easier and it makes our officers even more mindful than they already are through their regular training. So I liked that. Most of the other things I had noted down, Chief Parish has already spoke to. I did see a required, a suggestion for perhaps some training for supervisors for dealing with officer-involved shootings. It is true, it's something we've had here. I'm hoping training like that would be totally wasted and totally unnecessary, but I'd be happy to support it. Because I think it would be invaluable for those officers and for us to do our job right for everybody involved and all sides of something like that, if it ever occurred in Qatadi. So that's the only comments I have in that. So with that, I will thank you, Mr. Lewis, for your time and the report. That's very helpful to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
One more time to the council, see if there's any last comments. And seeing none, thank you.
Mayor Lemon, just one quick one. Just to the, to the question of, of frequency of a review like this, annual feels too often to me. I would want to know from the chief how much officer and how much officer and staff time this took before we. Made a commitment to do something like this annually. That feels like too frequently to me.
Yeah, my suggestion was somewhere, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agree that every year would be, um, too often. Honestly, it wasn't a great demand on staff, but. I'm, I'm going to, moving forward, I'm providing council with the annual report every year like I will be tonight. And I know this is different and, and I know Jamie is a best practice guy. But I think every two years would be a good benchmark for us to look for.
Perfect. Well, I had suggested anywhere from annual to biannual, meaning every two years. It sounds like we've come to a consensus very quickly, so thank you for that, council. Uh, and it's a good thing to do. So that does complete item eleven A. We'll now move on to regular agenda. Item B, which is our police twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two-one annual report to the community. And we'll hand it right over to Chief Parish again.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor and council members for this opportunity to provide you with the, uh. Police Department annual report for twenty-twenty-one. I would like to recognize that I did not do this alone. So I, I had significant help from, uh, police dispatcher clerk Christina Montoya with the crime stats and citation stats. So I wanted to recognize that. And also our deputy city clerk Kevin Patterson helped me with this. Not only the PowerPoint tonight, but with the actual annual report, um, making it presentable. Not really in my wheelhouse, but it was in Kevin's and I just wanted to, to recognize, uh, his, his effort. And his input on this, it's, it's greatly appreciated. This council, this is a PowerPoint of the annual report. At some point soon, the annual police report will be available on our city website for public access. I also plan on pushing it out on social media, a link to the report to get even more. Readership of the annual report, that's my goal. And again, this is a PowerPoint, so I'm not going to be reading it verbatim, but it'll be overview of the report. And as far as the last public comment, it will have things to look at, so. It's very visual, I would say that. So Kevin, can you go to the next slide? So this, this is just a message from me that people will see on the annual report. It is the photograph that I used the year before. I use it again because it's still my favorite photograph. So that's why that's up there. But again, it's for, um, it's for the public to read the message from the chief and Kevin, can you go to the next slide? So continuing, this is a message from me. I do want to read this. Our community policing philosophy includes personal outreach to stakeholders to remain proactive in reducing crime. Increasing traffic safety, enhancing citizen and business engagement and improving the overall well-being of the city. So we want to continue our focus of training on employee health and wellness. Effective ways to engage people who are in mental health crisis, continue understanding implicit bias, which I personally. I, I totally get that. We all have it. I'm, I recognize it more and more that we all have it through some training that I've received. Also, we want to enhance de-escalation tactics through equipment and training. And lastly, the Qatadi Police Department will continue to become a progressive police department. Looking for unconventional ways to build trust and legitimacy in our city. So, uh, next, next slide, please. So I want to talk about COVID nineteen and I know. I know it's, um, something that, uh, we all want to get past and move on. But it's just very important that I, I talk about COVID nineteen and how it, how it affected the Qatadi Police Department. First of all, I'll share with you that out of thirteen sworn members. Ten had COVID. In addition to that, support staff, like dispatchers. Had COVID. Some employees had COVID more than once. Even if they were vaccinated. And so I spent, I spent a great deal of time on my cell phone at home and, and on the phone at work here. Being an investigator of how did this COVID come about, you know, just tracking it down. There was a significant amount of time spent on that during, um, twenty-twenty-one. So emergency testing, having people show up to test us. So it was a significant, uh, lift for the police department. Having said that. We never stopped taking nine-one-one calls. We never stopped responding to calls for service. And I just want to recognize, um. Our police staff for stepping up and covering shifts when people had COVID, whether it was dispatcher, patrol. It was a huge lift. For twenty-twenty-one. There's no Zoom for, for a nine-one-one call. There's no Zoom for responding to a domestic violence call. And there's no Zooming for traffic enforcement. So anyways. I just wanted to share, um, that with, with council and the public. Uh, next slide. So here's our organizational chart. So right now, uh, we were, we are without lieutenant. Our lieutenant is officially retired now. He is caring for his mother. And so that happened in twenty-one. So what I did was. So we had, we had a reserve police officer, Ryan Sullivan. Who I did not want to lose. So he was a level one reserve police officer working for us, working patrol. So when the lieutenant position became vacant. Um, I opened up a sergeant's promotion because before that we had two sergeants. So in the organization chart, uh, you'll see that there's Sergeant Gooden, Wardle and Gyo. And so Sergeant Wardle's a new. Sergeant replacing the lieutenant position. My, my hopes and goals and dreams are, um, to. Get either Sergeant Gooden, Wardle or be Gyo, get one of these sergeants up to speed. To become the lieutenant in the future, which will obviously be a, there'll be a testing process for that, of course. We do have some vacancies right now. So unfortunately, this is not a Qatadi thing, this is not a Sonoma County thing, a California thing, this is a nationwide trend. There is a shortage of police officers. And there is a shortage of nine-one-one dispatchers. So we've done really well, um, keeping staff over the years. It's especially like the last five years, hardly any turnover would happen. Unfortunately, we lost. Two personnel to the city of Runner Park, eight, which is a police officer and a dispatcher. They were hired as laterals and given a twenty thousand dollar bonus because of their training and, and experience. So we lost them. And then we also lost a police corporal, you'll see where that corporal is vacant, and we lost the corporal to the sheriff's office. And this, this all happened just very recently. Um, so this is the current organizational chart. So, uh, next slide. So here, here's where we get into the, uh, statistics of the department and there, there'll be multiple slides of this. So you can see the twenty-twenty and the twenty-twenty-one, um, side-by-side comparisons. I guess what's, kind of what's different with twenty-twenty was. We weren't really in to shelter in place in twenty-twenty, um, until. Like May or June, um, and businesses weren't really shutting down and bars until. Around May or June in twenty-twenty. In twenty-twenty-one, pretty much all the bars and restaurants were shut down and there was a shelter in place. Um, but there's still, there's not a big difference in numbers here. What's interesting is, as far as officer-initiated activity, both years were fifty-six percent. And officer-initiated activity is anything officer is doing, whether it's a vehicle stop or parking enforcement or. A probation search or running a person to see if they're wanted or not. And so that's what we talk about, officer-initiated, um, activity. And then the other, the other slice of the pie is calls for service. And again, not a significant, uh, difference between the two, two years. Um, as you can see, a little less in twenty-twenty-one compared to. Twenty-twenty-two, I mean, twenty-one. So next slide. So these are arrests and there's, there's three years here of data. So we got twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-one. So the orange is arrested and booked. The blue is sighted out, as we call it. The other, the eight forty-nine follow-up, warn up, warn up. Warrant follow up. I want to explain because you probably don't know what eight forty nine is a penal code. So if somebody, for example, gets arrested for drunken, drunk in public downtown or whatever, we get into the jail. There's no problems with the individual. They really don't have any significant history or past regarding the criminal justice system. We can, we can write a eight forty nine citation, and they won't be charged. They would just get booked in jail. So we're up and get out. And then as far as warrants, we can clear, we can clear arrests by warrants. So we can identify a suspect. And then a judge would agree, yeah, that's the suspect and they have a warrant. And so we may, may never find that person because they could leave the state or whatever. That's considered an arrest. So I just wanted to clarify that. Something that's interesting to me is that in two thousand and twenty one, there is a significant more people cited rather than released. So you can see in two thousand and nineteen, there's there's more arrests and quite a few people cited. And that's pre-COVID, right? But then when we move into COVID, the citations in two thousand and twenty, they start getting close to the amount of arrests. And then in two thousand and twenty one, all of a sudden, there's far more citations instead of arrests. There's a reason for it. So a big reason for that was the jail. So the county jail had multiple COVID outbreaks. And we had the sheriff of the county saying, hey, please don't book. Please cite out because we have correctional deputies getting COVID and inmates. So we had all of these requests by the sheriff to please cite people out. So that's, that's why that statistic looks like that. And prior to that, I can remember, like, for example, the Alameda Sheriff, when he would have vacancies in his jail for whatever reason, other sheriff's departments would go, oh, hey, Alameda Sheriff, since you have room in your jail, can you house our our sentenced people from my jail? And, and the sheriff's departments would work that out. But with COVID, the Alameda Sheriff is not going to receive any inmates, right? Because of fear of outbreak in their own jails. So that's the arrest statistics. Next slide, please. Here's some violent crime data, and it's, we got two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, twenty one. And fortunately, two thousand and twenty one, when there was no homicide, there were fewer rapes. The robberies weren't a big difference, but then aggravated assault is up compared to a busier year of two thousand and nineteen. Why is that? And I can speculate that maybe people are sheltering in place in their own homes and maybe getting a little agitated because aggravated assault would include a felony domestic violence assault. So that could be that statistic going out. But again, counsel, it's statistics and sometimes they're hard to figure out. Next slide. Here's, here's the property crime statistics. Again, for nineteen, twenty, twenty one. So one that jumps out to me is the, the larceny, theft of personal property. And that one is catalytic converter thefts, I believe. Because that's not a motor vehicle theft. It's not a burglary. So that's, that was that uptick in twenty twenty. They continue. I mean, I'm sorry, in twenty one. And they continue catalytic converter thefts. And it's not a Catati problem. This is, again, this is, I know it's all over the Bay Area. These catalytic converter thefts are just prolific. Burglaries, when you look at burglaries, that could also be auto burglary, just not like a burglary of a building or residence. Motor vehicle theft is down. And then barsons are minimal. Next slide. So here's some other crime statistics, a little bit different. And assault is down. So I talked about aggravated assault. This other assault is not as violent as a crime, more of a, an assault and battery, but not the level of injury or weapons used. Then we have fraud, stolen properties up a little bit. vandalism, weapons offenses, sexual offense, others. So that's not rape. That's a different type of sexual offense. And then you get into drug, drug offenses. As Jamie spoke, there's a lot of fentanyl out there. And then here's where it gets interesting, driving under the influence compared to when you look at two thousand and nineteen, you look at two thousand and twenty one, it's like half. Why? Probably because shelter in place, because bars are closed, restaurants are closed and not serving alcohol. So I'm sure that has a lot to do with it. Then the, the other alcohol violations and drunkenness and disorderly conduct, I believe they're down in our city again because bars are closed. There's not people drinking in restaurants. And so I believe that that has a factor on the, those statistics. I will tell you that. So for next year, when I do the annual report for two thousand and twenty two, these crime statistics are not going to look like this. It's no longer going to be the UCR. This is the Uniform Crime Report. It's been around forever. It's from the FBI. I'm a criminal justice undergrad person, and they've been talking about neighbors forever. And that's a national incident-based reporting system. So next year, when I report out, it's not going to be the UCR. It's going to be neighbors, and it's going to be a far more comprehensive, robust report nationwide. And it's going to include more information such as victim information, offender information, time of the crime, location of the crime even. So next year, again, look for a very different crime stat report. Next slide. Citations on two thousand and twenty one. Our police officers wrote one thousand eight hundred and seventy citations. That's a lot, in my opinion, especially when you know, we're worried about COVID. So a vehicle stop for a simple cellphone site could lead into a probation search and then getting someone out of the car and patting them down and possibly transporting them to the county jail. So I think, and we were very sensitive to that, but still we were active. And you can see we, fifty three percent of this was moving violations that's called out. But the fix-it ticket and the warning citations would also be included in moving violations. Then quite a number of parking violations and then non-moving violations and Muni codes were like very few. And so I think the Muni code violations are down because there's the bars were shut down because a lot of our Muni code violations are associated with the bar activity. I will share with council that these warning citations, so nobody's a bigger fan than me of a warning citation. And I'm going to keep reminding our police staff of this. Here's why I'm a fan. I, I honestly don't care if a citizen gets a regular movement violation or a warning because the money that comes back to the city is insignificant. So having said that, I think it's I think, you know, the climate and with policing, I think it's kind to give somebody a warning violation. The, the, these fines are enormous, you know, and not everybody can afford them, and it could turn into warrants. But what is, what is your constituents' council, what do they see when somebody's getting a warning citation? They see the patrol car on the side of the road when somebody pulled over, doing traffic enforcement. And that's what they're doing. It's still traffic enforcement. So I'm going to continue to share with my staff that as far as, as the police chief, I'm okay with warning citations being issued because I think it's just, I think it's good policing and I embrace it. Next slide, please. So citizen complaints. We had a total of ten in two thousand and twenty one. So when you, out of all the events, when you break it down, the rate of complaint is point oh eight percent. I will share with you that out of the ten complaints, three of them were from the same person. And in previous years, the same individual had even more complaints. So I guess I'll take that, that there were fewer. So the types of complaints, how we receive them are sometimes in person, but we didn't. The blue form, so in our lobby, there's a form that somebody can walk in and say, I have an issue with something that happened at the police department here. And it could be, it may not even be an officer. It could be a dispatcher or or even a different support staff member. So they're given the blue form to fill out and return. People can go on the city website and file a complaint. They can email or telephone. And then so the categories of complaints are procedural. A lot of time it's like you know, like they're disagreeing with a citation, for example, well, you know, that's sometimes for the court to resolve. The most we had was conduct unbecoming, which is generally, some people say that, that they, they perceive the officer as rude. Use of force, we had none, and then not related to the, to the department. Sometimes people will come, come in and complain and we'll, we'll chase it down and figure out it wasn't even Catati. It was, it was Runner Park. There was there was a sustained complaint against the officer for being discourteous. So there was one of these complaints sustained in two thousand and twenty one. For, like, so far, so far in two thousand and twenty two, I've, I've got a few complaints as well, but just to share with you that some, some things, you know, we do get legitimate complaints. And I'm not denying that, but an example of a of a rudeness complaint was the officer was rude. And then we chased it down. Well, the officer wrote a parking site on a vehicle. And they had, and then it turns out they had no interaction with the officer whatsoever. They weren't present when the officer put the citation on the window. So, next slide, please. All right. So this is something that I know that the that not only the council, but our community and our officers and me, we're all excited that this got rolled out. I, I do recognize that, that I had huge support from council and from Damian. The Runner Park Chief also acknowledges that, that he had significant support from his council and manager. So us chiefs, we appreciate, we appreciate the support. But we did make this happen. So Safe Team is specialized assistance for everyone. The Safe Team, the Safe Team provides three main services to the community, response to issues relating to mental health, addiction, and homelessness, non-emergency response for people in need, proactive and continued community outreach. We started in November of twenty one with twelve hour coverage. We are already up to eighteen hour daily coverage. And we have a goal of having the Safe Team available twenty four hours a day by the end of two thousand and twenty two. The calls, so I know council's aware, and obviously me and Damian are aware that we're trying to get a better product on, report out for the calls for service. But again, it's, it's a new program. They've kind of, they've co-mingled our calls with Runner Park, who are working through that. I can assure you that me and Damian, we have a bi-weekly meeting regarding safe, and we are we are pushing them to give us more information and better statistics. I think we're really close to that. They're, they hear us, and they're going to start giving a a Runner Park number of calls for service and a Catati report for calls for service that obviously can be shared with, with council. So we just encourage the public, if they recognize somebody in distress, and it's not a dangerous emergency, that they can call the police department and request the Safe Team will respond. I can tell you that they've helped our officers on several calls. I think they're doing a good job. I think it works. And and people in mental health decline, you know, who are paranoid or schizophrenic or whatever it is, that our police uniforms don't help. And so it's just, it's a good practice to send the, the Safe Team instead of law enforcement. Next slide. So this is the racial and identified profile now, RIPA, it's called. So I know Jamie reported out on this, on his audit, and he's correct, and council's aware of this, that we did starting, we started collecting RIPA data early. We started collecting it July of twenty one. It was a heavy lift. A lot of it was a heavy IT lift. And because we're, because we're going early, it's a learning curve for, for chiefs and sheriffs. And so what I've learned working through this is, this is kind of like the UCR, this is kind of like the Uniform Crime Report that goes to DOJ. I don't just provide a uniform crime report of my own data. That is provided to DOJ so that they can look at the data and agree with the data. And then then they'll produce a UCR and allow me to share those numbers. Same thing with, with RIPA. What's going to happen is the data that we collected July one twenty one to December thirtieth, twenty one, is going to be reported out by DOJ in the fall. So this first report in the fall of two thousand and twenty two is only going to have six months of data. However, when the RIPA data gets reported out for Catati in two thousand and twenty three, it's going to have the entire year of twenty twenty two. And what RIPA data does is it identifies the perceived gender, race, et cetera, of a person stopped by a police officer, whether it's a vehicle stop or consensual contact you know, on the side of the road. It is, one thing about RIPA that we're learning is that it's it takes significant staff time for the officer to complete the RIPA data. So the reason I share that with you is, for example, our, our motor officer, who, if, if we say, hey, conduct speed enforcement, cellphone enforcement, whatever on this street, prior to RIPA, that data didn't have to be recorded. But now every time there's a contact, the officer is having to stop and having to get out the, either their, their cellphone, because we have an app for that, for the RIPA app, or on their MDC, and it takes significant time for every stop to fill out. So it's reduced our performance to do like radar enforcement. And then most council members will remember the site program, which is combined intensive traffic enforcement. And that's where agencies in Sonoma County, we've come together. We've done it in Catati. You'll remember I put a Nixle out on the, the And that's where agencies in Sonoma County, we've come together. We've done it in Katari. You'll remember I put a Nixle out on the 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 statistics on the day of of the site enforcement. So we'll have CHP, Santa Rosa, all the local agencies come to Katari and and do traffic enforcement in designated areas, problem areas of Katari. Well, I I convinced the chiefs to bring that back recently because we stopped doing that because of COVID, because we couldn't co-mingle CHP and other police officers and spread COVID, so we it was down. So I talked to Chief Association and bringing it back. And then we discovered that because of RIPA, we've got to figure out how to do that now, because when a police officer in Katari is out on a stop with somebody, the dispatcher puts them out on a stop, creating a call for the RIPA data. And so we don't really know how to do that now for the site program. So I'm a little concerned that moving forward, we can even do site. So it's just just an effect that I wanted to share with council. Next slide, please. So hopefully everybody heard the the high-low siren drill that we did last summer. So just remember, we only use the high-low sirens for emergency evacuations. So don't just think fire, it could be a different emergency. But in our county, it's it's a high risk. And so again, if you hear the high-low siren, which has got a very distinct noise, it's time to go. It's time to evacuate. So in the fall of twenty twenty one, it says here during the fire season, but I guess I'll just say it's always fire season now. But our department, it's Sonoma State University and Runner Park, we conducted a coordinated high-low siren evacuation drill, was very successful. I was happy with it. There was a lot of equipment associated with this, so we weren't, so some some of our cars had the capability to to make the high-low noise with programming and older older patrol cars couldn't because if we had to have that siren changed. So it was a different for different patrol cars. But we worked it out, we conducted the drill and of course, we will be conducting another one this year earlier. And for the public, if you go to the city website, you can see your evacuation zone that you live in. So if you hear the high-low sirens, time to go. And then I would look for, you know, citizens need to be signed up for Nixle alerts because we would push out a Nixle of what's happening and what direction to go. And it's significant to know what zone you live in, because that's important for repopulation, because we don't want everybody returning at once. We want you returning by zone, which again would be pushed out through Nixle. Next slide. So police policies, I know we talked about that already tonight. But it is available on the website. When we do change policies, we we update them. So the old policy is not on the website. When we have changes in policy, we will repost it and it's available for the public to see. And then, as we know, we just had a policy compliance review, which went well. And again, those those high-risk areas were evidence pursuit and use of force. So next slide. So we this is something that I have not, I have not always done the DA prescription drug takeback. But thankfully, we got a a new DEA boss a couple of years ago, and he shared this with the chiefs and encouraged us to do this. And so we're always going to do this moving forward. So whenever whenever the DEA presents an opportunity for the drug takeback, we're just going to participate. And we're going to do that because they'll destroy all the medications for us. So during the shelter in place, I guess a lot of people were not, they weren't getting rid of their medications because police lobbies were closed and other places that took medications weren't accepting them because of COVID. And so I could not believe it, but there was a, we had a prescription drug takeback in Katari, and we collected four hundred and ten pounds of medications. That photo on the right, that's that's not a, that's not a Katari photo. That was the DEA agent that I spoke of. That's at the DEA evidence to be destroyed and that sign says, Katari, four hundred and ten pounds. So we just had one of these. Again, I will continue to always take them up on their offer when they host one of these. And outside the DEA, drug takeback, citizens can come to Katari Police Department because we have a small bin here. We just ask that people remove medications from the bottles, remove the tablets from the bottles and put them in a bag. Otherwise, the bin will fill up too fast. Next slide. So training, again, this was spoke of earlier, but we're doing more training than ever. And beyond the the post mandated training, you know, with the new laws and police reform, we're looking at things like principal policing, teaching police approaches that emphasize respect, listening neutrality and trust, which is also called procedural justice, addressing implicit bias that can be buried to approaches. We had our dispatchers and officer attend a crisis, callers in crisis, suicide suicidal callers. And then we've had a couple of de-escalation trainings, which teaches police officers and dispatchers, not only officers, but it's important dispatchers. Message to de-escalate volatile situations to improve outcomes and prevent harm, including when not to respond DVD intercede if it's believed that excessive force is being used and when it's safe to retreat to help and de-escalate a situation. So I want to, I want to speak to that wording, including when not to respond. So I think law, I know law enforcement in the past, including dispatchers, I think we were robotic on loading up calls for service. So I'm talking about computerated dispatch that a call comes in and the dispatcher is just like, okay, the person's telling him this. And so they're just going to type away, create a call, which would then go to the officer's mobile data computer to look at. So we've included our dispatchers in de-escalation trainings. And we got praise from the from the the group teaching it for sending our dispatchers. And it's important because our dispatchers may may now more quickly realize that that this this person that's calling and reporting this thing has has an obvious prejudice for one. And before they load up the call, maybe they'll speak with the supervisor, hey, this is what I got. Or in addition to that, realizing that, hey, if the officers go to this particular call, it's going to, it's going to escalate. It's going to turn out, it's going to turn out bad. So that's when I talk about, maybe we don't go to certain things, maybe we just don't respond. So I just think that was important to share with council and the public. Next slide. So recruit training officers. I'm proud to say that our police department has two there. I know I reported on that last year. I've talked to other chiefs and personnel at the police academy, they said that Katari has never had a recruit training officer in the past, let alone two. So I'm I'm proud that they're there. I'm honored. There's Sergeant Wardle, if that kind of looks like a basic training photo at Police Academy, it's kind of like basic training. But again, I'm just, I'm glad that that Katari PD is there has taken a role in training future officers for for the region, for the entire region. Our next slide. So I participated in a local road safety plan with our city engineer, Craig Scott and others. This was a this was a the local road safety plan is identifying top systemic collision patterns throughout the city and top collision locations. So looking at those top collision locations and addressing it. There was, we open this to the public, so people were able to comment online their 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 thoughts, their needs, their concerns. We had a lot of public input on this beyond the the website. The city engineer and myself, we had a public meeting, which was well attended for public input, so live public input in addition to input on our website. And so this is a, this is like a roadmap for for future vehicle pedestrian bicycle travel in in Katari. So that's the LRSP, next slide. Okay, so here's where it gets interesting, right? Because I know this is a big topic, so use of force. So Ursus data, so I I cannot find an acronym for Ursus. So I I can't tell you where that name come from, but I tried because I was curious myself of where that term came from. But Ursus criteria, so we had zero to report in twenty twenty one. So that, so Ursus criteria, this is the significant use of force. This is an incident that involves the shooting of a civilian by a peace officer. An incident that involves the shooting of a peace officer by a civilian. An incident in which use of force by a peace officer against a civilian results in serious bodily injury or death. An incident in which use of force by a civilian against a peace officer results in serious bodily injury or death. And so luckily, we did not have to report out on Ursus. So I've come up with four tonight, but we've adopted a far more expansive definition of use of force, including receiving any incident beyond simple handcuffing. Reporting use of force events in Katari include display of force such as unholstering, any type of police tool, including taser, pepper, spray or firearm. Next slide. So I know there's a lot going on in this slide and I'll explain it. So on the on the left, we have the number of events, the number of events total thirty nine. So we got fifteen control hold. That is like putting somebody's arm behind their back to to restrain them. So the officer doesn't get struck. So in other words, placing one hand behind somebody's back and holding the other like a control hold. A wrap is a body wrap. Control hold and defensive techniques, that could be the control hold that I explained. Beyond, and then a struggle ensues beyond that. It could be distraction rules, taking somebody in to the ground, trying to subdue them. In other words, a fight. Taser. We've got one taser deployed defensive technique. There's one there. Now, I don't want to I don't want it to be confusing. So on the taser deployed defensive technique, it's called out as one, but if you drop down to taser deployed toward the bottom, there's zero on that column. That's because the taser was deployed when defensive techniques were used. If that makes sense. And then there was a control hold with a wrap, one. Then we had a control hold wrap, taser displayed, one. Control hold, taser displayed for firearm display two, firearm pointed seven. Beanbag round zero, taser displayed for. Again, there was a taser deployed, but it was called out in the previous column. Nobody was hit with an impact weapon, pepper or pepper spray. And then so I know council's going to wonder, hey, you know, these firearm deployments, so these these incidents involved, if you look at the right column, you got a arrest active warrant, so some type of felony warrant. Arrest battery where somebody got a firearm pointed at him. So this medical assist felony vehicle stop, I do recall that one. This was somebody in a motorhome that fell to yield and was being followed by law enforcement in a slow speed pursuit. And there was firearms pointed and it turned out that this gentleman was having a medical issue. Firearms pointed, we assisted the sheriff's department with a vehicle pursuit. We had a firearm pointed where there was a fifty-one fifty hole where a person had a gun in the vehicle. Felony car stop. And then an arrest and another felony car stop assisting, it looks like Sonoma State University. And assist with the sheriff's department on a felony car stop. And then an arrest felony pursuit and warrant mutual aid, which is going to be with other assisting in another law enforcement agency. So this last one, this taser deployed defensive technique, you can see these crimes, this, it was an arrest auto burglary assault on the police officers with a deadly weapon and and threats to officers. Both officers tased this individual that was, it was a crime in progress. Tasers had little effect. The officers were basically in a fight for their lives and ultimately handcuffed this person without injuring the person that was arrested. Next slide. So body worn camera upgrade. So you you heard me time and time again bragged that we were the first in Sonoma County to deploy body cameras on all our police officers. As of recent, I saw the the mayor of Antioch bragging that how his department was now going to deploy body worn cameras and we did this a decade ago. These, this is our third generation. So as you know, our body worn cameras associated with the cloud. So this is generation three. Axon body cameras. They do a lot more than they ever have. So not only, so the the batteries last longer for the twelve hour shifts. It's more high definition. Even more high definition, it it sees well in the dark or or records video well even in low light. It's just an awesome camera. But here's what you'll be surprised is with this Gen three, it does a lot. So if an officer draws his firearm, there's a sensor and it turns the body camera on. Which we never had that capability because of officers ambushed, if you think about it. I mean, if you're ambushed, you're not going to be able to draw your gun and turn on your body camera. Same with the taser. When the taser is activated, so when the firearms drawn, there's a sensor in the holster. That'll activate the body worn camera. With the taser, when it's removed from the holster, it doesn't activate it. It's when the, when it's act, when the taser is activated. Because the taser has a red dot for aiming. There's like a red dot to aim at the suspect. We also have five cars that we're going to equip when we'll just where it's associated with the overhead lights. So if we do a vehicle stop, we're going to turn on the red lights, pull you over, that can activate the body worn camera. The body worn camera also has live streaming capability. So if we had an officer out with like a suspect who was armed with a dangerous weapon and we're looking at you know, how to deploy resources. We can look at their body worn camera, their their live stream footage on a PC. I've done that and I've done that with the dispatcher in dispatch. We've tested that live streaming. This is all new. We're all, we're just figuring all this out. But just an awesome, awesome product. And looking forward to figuring out how to activate all these things that it that it can do, because it can do a lot. Next slide. So our our neighborhood officers, we have six areas in our city and officers are assigned to each of the six. One of the six areas, so we have six. One of the six areas, so we have six officers available. That can be emailed or voicemails can be left for them if, if citizens have questions or concerns. We have biannual meetings, we've been doing those on Zoom, prior to Zoom, they were in person. I would imagine that at some point, we'll, we'll offer a hybrid where. Citizens can either zoom in, if that's what makes them comfortable, to talk to their area officer or even show up. And we hope that the, we hope that people. Look at the map and see what zone they live in. And, and join us for these biannual meetings. And again, it's, it's all on the website and pretty easy to find, next slide. Patrol. Right there, there's a photo, I talk about Cadillac and a murder theft and evidence. That's what that is, that's us making a Cadillac murder thief arrest, and that's all the tools of the trade. So if you don't know what all our, our officers do a lot, so. You know, obviously they protect life and property, that's the bread and butter. Do traffic enforcement, respond to calls for service. They got to. Write reports of their investigations and be prepared to testify in court. Of course, we want them to exercise sound judgment, determining when to use force, what, to what degree. They need to be active in community oriented, oriented policing and obviously. We want them doing traffic enforcement and traffic collision investigations and criminal investigations. They also help support animal patrol enforcement when Carrie is on around. And do bar checks and that's just. That's just tip of the iceberg, what patrol does, next slide. Yeah, speaking of Carrie, so Carrie is our community service officer designated animal patrol. And dog licensing, and we always remember, we remind everybody to please license your dog if you're a Katati resident, it's cheap. If you're fifty five or older, you get one free one, but. We all want, if you're, if your pet gets loose, the officer, it's just much easier for the officer to return your dog to you, and so it's just better for. The resident, the dog and the officer, so please. We, we hope that everybody licenses their dogs, next slide. And dispatch, we're all aware that. Believe it or not, it's been almost five years, because we're coming up on the sunset of our contract, but almost five years now, we've been. Also dispatching Sonoma State University and it's working out great. Again, working through COVID. I'm just, I'm just proud of our dispatchers that. You know, for twenty twenty one, even during COVID, they all, they always answered, not only nine one one calls, but, but just. Police business calls as well, next slide. So the matter award, this is the mother against, mothers against drug grabbing award. So Sergeant Tyler Wardle, he's, he has won this in the past. And I'm happy to say that he. He won this award again in twenty twenty one. So he's out there getting these dangerous drivers off the road. So I just wanted to recognize that, next slide. Here's our traffic officer, Ryan Rinkie, he is a full-time traffic officer. Obviously, his primary duty is. Writing citations and trying to change the behavior that causes accidents such as speeding and. Distur, distracted driving on our website. And people are using this, on our website, people do communicate with Officer Rinkie. Concerns about different types of traffic violations. And he's been responsive to them, so it's, it's a, this is a new addition that we have. On our website, next slide. So our K nineteen, Remo's been around for a while. So he can, he can find people that hide from him, he can apprehend people. And he can also detect. Different types of illegal narcotics, he does not tech, he does not. He's not trained to hit on cannabis, never was, because we, we saw that coming, that. We knew Prop sixty four would probably pass, so if he was trained to hit on cannabis, you can't untrain that, he would always do that. So we, we got ahead of that, so he doesn't. We still got him deployed, next slide. We have cadets and volunteers, of course, here at the police department, during COVID, we really didn't use them. They are, we are slowly returning them, because we're getting a little more comfortable. And so, for example, we got a kids' day parade coming up, fortunately. And we'll be using them to help us with that, and they help us with other things as well, and next slide. And then partnerships, I meant, I mentioned this last year, and I've been here eleven years, and I can tell you that our, our relationships with Rancho Doby. Fire protection district, SSUPD and, and Runner Park, Department of Public Safety is just great, and we're doing great things together. And, you know, doing the safety, partnering with Runner Park is great as well, and we're going to try to get, we are trying to. Getting Sonoma State as a partner also with, with safety as well, next slide. And then community outreach, there's Sergeant Gyo getting a ride in a pink Jeep there. That's in the bird section, I remember that. So we, even though we were in COVID, we did manage a couple. Copy with a cop. Somehow National Night Out worked, I don't know how, because if you remember, the shelter in place got lifted and went back and forth, what we did. We, we were able to do that, we, we made the, the annual toy drive happen as well. And we did that in partnership with Rotary and, and Rancho Doby Fire District, next slide. And then community information. We, you know, we got about forty five hundred people following us on Facebook, I'm not here on Instagram. Looks like, I think twenty eight follow, twenty eight hundred followers is a little low, we are above that forty three hundred threshold on Facebook. And we want people to follow us on social media and, and important, more importantly. Is Nixal, we would like everybody to get signed up on Nixal, because. If there's something. Extreme happening in Katati and you need to evacuate or have direction for your safety, we can push that out in an emergency text. And. Council, I know that was a lot of information fast, that's the last slide, and I, again, I thank you. For allowing me to present this, and I'm gonna imagine there's going to be questions.
Well, thank you for the perfect segue, chief, I imagine we will, let's see, I can see a couple of them on the screen and I can see the list. And I'll be looking to see if we, who'd like to start, if anyone has some questions for the chief. Councilmember Sparks, I see you here.
Thank you so much, thank you for that really great informative report, Chief Parish. I just had a few questions. When the, looking at the crime report, the drug offenses seem to be the highest number of offenses. And I wondered if you could just kind of give us a feel for what a typical drug offense incident would be and. Just because that's such a broad category and it seems like we're more, more of those crimes than any others, so could you explain a little about that?
Absolutely, so I would say, first of all, I would say, Councilmember Sparks, I would say fentanyl, fentanyl and fentanyl. And the reason I say that is. There's just fentanyl, which is bad and addictive, but. But methamphetamine and heroin. And cocaine are being laced with fentanyl. And unfortunately. Not all users know when that is or is not happening, it's very dangerous and. We're just seeing a lot of, we're seeing a lot of. Drug use. We always have. And then Prop forty seven came along and. Has basically decriminalized. These offenses from felonies to misdemeanors. And there's just unfortunately, a lot of people addicted to drugs and. Law enforcement just comes into contact with them.
So would a typical contact that's listed on that chart be? Somebody who was cited for misdemeanor possession or intent to distribute or, or what, what sorts of things are showing up in those numbers?
Are you, Councilmember Sparks, are you referring to the arrest stat?
I'm referring to the UCR numbers where it had seventy eight drug offenses as, I believe it was just listed as a crime on that slide, so I'm trying to understand, you know, are those. Arrests or citations or what?
They're both, so normally, so I would say normally. Possession of, a, a simple possession of heroin, for example. Could. Result in a citation or arrest, because it's a misdemeanor, and a misdemeanor committed in the. Officers present, but normally, somebody would be cited for that. But for example, if the same person had. Heroin and packaged for sale, now we have a felony, they're going to, they're going to normally get booked in the county jail. And, does that answer your question?
I, I think it does, yeah, and I, I guess that that leads to my next question also naturally, which was, as we switch to the, was it Nivers or I forgot. How you pronounced it, the new data?
Nivers is correct.
Nivers, will, will it break down the drug offenses a little bit more granularly? And then second question about that with Nivers, for the first year or two, as we transition onto that data. Will there be a way for us to still see the bar graph so that we can identify any trends? Or are we, do you see what I mean, like if we switch up the UCR, yeah?
I understand your questions. So as far as with Nivers and the graph, I would hope that, yeah, we would be able to receive us crime stats. That are more robust, like victim information, offender information, location, time. I don't see why we can't provide a graph for that, I think we can. Regarding the breakdowns of the drugs, I don't, I don't think so, I think Nivers is more focused on. Like assaults and theft and. Things like that of nature, stolen cars. I don't think it's going to break, there's so many drugs out there and so many variables for that, I don't think that's going to be. A big change, but it would point out that the, the, the victims or the suspects, right? Maybe a demographic that has the drug, a location or where the drug offenses are happening, a time of when the drugs, drug offenses are happening.
Yeah, I guess I'd just be interested to know if, if there's some way to find this information easily in the future of, of. What, you know, what proportion of those drug offenses are just simple possession versus other more serious offenses?
Well, I think, I think that would be called out because the. The simple possession is going to be a misdemeanor.
Okay.
Where the, if like, if you're dealing drugs or even are in possession. Of drugs that are packaged to sell, that would be, that would be called out as a felony, I think you would.
Okay, great, that's fantastic, and. Oh, let's see, I had two more questions, one was about the control holds. I'm really grateful to you for sort of explaining control holds separately, we talked about a little bit. I'm just wondering if in the report. I, I was surprised to learn that a control hold could include, you know, distraction strikes, hitting and kicking somebody. Pain compliance type of things, I, I hadn't, as a, as a layperson, when I read the report, I hadn't envisioned those as. Control holds, because I just wasn't that familiar with that term, so. I was hoping that in the future, maybe we could have a little more description of what sorts of things would happen as a control hold. Do you think that would be something easy to incorporate in the, in the report next year?
I think it's going to be, that's pretty finite to break it down like that, I can tell you that on that.
Maybe just a, just a description in, in the, in the description line, just maybe a listing of things that we fall in that category.
I'm sure there's room for improvement, with use of force. It gets ugly, so I'll tell you this. The, the arrest where our officers tased the subject. They were in for the fight or life, one of those officers. Told me that, 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 yeah. Chief, I was, you know, I was for the fight of my life, they were shook up. And so. I don't know. What you're looking for as far as describing the force we use like in that incident, I mean, we tased them. And again, I mean, they're just in a struggle and, and this guy's attacking them with the flower pot. So I don't know how finite I could break something down, again, I'm, you know.
Well, maybe I'll follow up with you one on one, because I, I, I think you're thinking I'm asking for something bigger than what I am, I just literally like a few words in that. You know, before the, before the report where it has the definition of each term. Maybe just like a listing of the sorts of things that could fall under a control hold, not, not trying to break down every single.
Well, yeah, then, so I, I think. There's room for improvement and I could add. A more robust detail, so yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I made it sound more complicated than it was. And then last, I somehow, when we, we spoke before, I, I had missed this in the report, I'm really. Happy to see the principal policing course and I just was interested to learn more about that, but maybe I can follow up with you about that. Separately, because that sounded really great, like a positive step, so I wanted to know more.
All right, I'm going to call in Mr. Ford next, but I wanted real quickly, before we got away from one comment, which I thought was valuable. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Sparks, but I. My perception of what you were asking the chief, I think, was you were looking for some denominator when a simple control hold. Holding somebody's arm behind their back in the position to restrain them and mobilize them. Crosses that line and all of a sudden, it was, you put it perfectly, I think, chief, it's a fight. You're, now you're using distraction blows, essentially, it's become a fight. And, and I don't know if you were looking for a laundry list of exactly if it's a distraction blow, if it's a. Or this or that, but you wanted to know the difference between a control hold to when it becomes. Essentially, it steps up to that next level of needing. That sort of. Control, extra control, and I would agree, that would just generally be good to know, because I think there's two different things, it's one thing if you're restraining somebody with their arm behind their back, it's another, all of a sudden. They manage to slip that, you're fighting and as you described, you're throwing distraction blows, trying to gain control of the subject, that's. That's the type of differentiation between the two, I'd hate to see that sort of thing. Wrapped under just the listing of control hold. I think we understand it now, because we've talked about it tonight, but for the general public. If there's a way to do it, that might be helpful to call that out, and, and Councilmember Sparks, if I got that wrong, let me know, but I thought that's what you were getting at.
I think you got at it better than I was trying to, so thank you, thank you very much.
Well, I see the chief nodding.
I'm in agreement, Mayor and Councilmember Sparks.
Okay, good, all right, Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor, two quick questions, I appreciate your encouraging your traffic enforcement officers to, to use warning citations when appropriate. But I just want to make sure, so warning, a warning citation is recorded, so if the same person gets stopped again, the officer knows that they've been warned previously, yes?
Correct, so in our records management system. If the same person is going through Katati, talking on their cell phone, dispatchers could inform. The officer of, of just that fact, like you say, and then beyond that. We really can't be, I mean, we could contact a homicide suspect. Technically, right, and if we don't record that somehow and we give them a warning site, we're not recording their presence in Katati. That's not good, we got to be able to record, so, yes. That's not good. We got to be able to record presence. So, yes.
Thanks. And I suppose you don't have the tool we teachers have us. Give me the cell phone and get it back at the end of the day. So second question is so you mentioned one sustained complaint and and so then what happens? Then I assume it's a it's a issue that you handle with the officer in in some kind of process within the department?
Yeah, so I I followed the California Peace Officer Bill Wright and the officer was able to obtain counsel. They obtained counsel through their police union. And there was an independent investigation conducted by a firm. And a retired police chief is the one that did the investigation and he did sustain a finding against the officer and I concur. And so the the person making the complaint will then be notified of the outcome in investigation that a that a violation was sustained, but legally it cannot be shared what the discipline was.
Right. Okay. Oh, thanks. That's helpful. That's more extensive a process than I envisioned. So so at some level within the department, you make a decision to sustain and that that then elevates it to a sort of obtaining counsel and having an outside investigation.
Well, no, not exactly. So when I said I, so the the investigator communicated to me in in writing in a narrative in an investigation that I believe that these violations were should be sustained.
I'm asking about the process of how it gets to an outside investigator. What happens before it goes to an outside investigator?
On this one, it was received, it was received through dispatch and forwarded into a police sergeant who reached out to the person making the complaint. The police sergeant put the complaint in writing and a memo to me. It looks significant to me and that's when I had a outside investigation happen. Now, if this is but Councilmember Ford, if this is a vehicle stop and a citizen says that, hey, this officer was rude to me. And then we look at the body worn camera and that's obviously not the case. That's not gonna go that far. That's or anywhere. I just want to make that clarification.
Yeah, great. Thanks. That's all I've got.
All right, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, I think I need a little bit of help with my math.
Okay.
Because on the citizens' complaints, if I'm understanding this correctly, there were twelve thousand four hundred and fifty five events and ten complaints. And when I do the math, it's point zero 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 eight. And if it was
Gotcha.
A in the report, there would have been nine hundred and ninety six complaints. At least that's my math. I that maybe Ben can
You have to multiply by a hundred to convert percent.
Vice Mayor, I like your better than mine.
No, but yes, point zero 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 eight is point zero eight percent. So, Michael, so Chief Parish had point zero eight percent on the slide, which is the same as your point zero 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 eight.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. I knew I I knew I could count on you to help me with that.
This is kind of like an after school special where both sides are right. I like that.
Thank you for the report, Chief. A lot of stuff going on. Really appreciate it.
I appreciate, Council, I appreciate the opportunity sincerely.
All right. Just real quickly, Chief, my colleagues have asked most of the big questions and you've answered a lot of the ones I had previously. And thank you tonight for two thorough presentations, reports. This is exactly what we were looking for. I just wanted to ask about the safe data because I noticed you mentioned a concern about a lot of staff time to extract safe data from their record management system. And I wanted to ask like Jamie, I'm kind of a dinosaur and I've been retired a long time, but even at that time, our forms who are doing are no longer paper PCRs. We are entering into a database essentially. Isn't safe entering in when they do a report on a call into a database where that then becomes searchable for the types of things that we'd want to see? Aren't they in that place yet?
You would think. So they they do have a mayor, they do have a tablet in the van. What we're finding is so that the safe personnel do not answer directly to the the cities of Runner Park or Katati and much to our chagrin. They're not separating out calls when they go to Katati versus Runner Park. So me and Damian have had extensive conversations with Pedaluma People Services, which includes Petaluma Safe Oversight and then our oversight of Katati Runner Park. So me and Damian have been talking to the lead person that's safe to make that happen. Like, you've got to do that. You've got, it's pretty simple and straightforward to identify when you are responding to a call in Katati versus Runner Park. We've been told that that change is going to happen. And so the next time we provide statistics for you, we're hoping that that number is broken out. That's and we think that's gonna happen next report.
Yeah, I would share your chagrin if they weren't responsive to requests. I don't think we need to have them under our control. And it's fair enough that we have to go through Petaluma People Services. That's logical to have an umbrella agency. Hopefully, eventually this can become more regional. So that's a good step, but we really do need to have that separation and seeing as we ultimately are paying for this and we have to justify the value to the public and to be able to justify to the public, we have to have that data, what, for example, the citizens of Runner Park are getting and the citizens Katati. Because if you mix it up, it's as useless as realty data is in this region. So at any rate, thank you for that. I'm glad to hear you're on top of that. That was the only concern I had left.
I can assure you that me and the city manager are we're moving forward to get that data correct.
When is their next contract due up with us? They'll be motivated by then all day. All right. Well, listen, we've had a lot of chance to talk and ask questions. I'd like to open it out now to the public and see if anybody has any public comment on this item.
I want I want to point out your video hasn't been visible for a while. I didn't know if you knew that.
This is interesting. Let's see. I'm not sure. I wonder if my camera got worse. Thank you. I'll work on that while we go try and find a public comment. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. I usually leave this to the side so I can't see myself, so I can watch your faces and watch for your hands. So I couldn't tell what I was doing if you didn't tell me.
Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council and move it back away from my pictures so I can see all of you and see if there's any further discussion, questions or anything on this particular item for now. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. I just had one thing I want to do address, which is the RIPA reporting. And well, I I very much appreciate our department's willingness to start collecting the data early and dismayed about the reporting the reporting out of that data and the timeline for getting it back from the state. When I look at the state RIPA data right now, I can only get twenty twenty. It's incredibly delayed. And maybe even twenty nineteen is just ridiculously delayed. There are departments, a few departments in the state that are reporting their RIPA data only a month or two behind. So my hope is that we can find some way to report our data in a little more real time than waiting for the turnaround from the state, which appears is like a year and a half. It's just ridiculous. So I don't know how they do it, but I can send you some links to some of the departments that are reporting their data just a month or two in arrears. They they must have some method for, you know, collecting it internally before sending in their state reports and not rely on the state reports. But my hope is that we we have some more real time because that was kind of the promise when we when we signed on to Rip and encouraged early was that we would have some decent data to look at. Not a year and a half later. Thanks.
Yeah, if the chief doesn't want to speak, that I remember the city manager mentioning this in the discussion at one point, too. It's another item of chagrin that the RIPA data is, at least at this point, somewhat impenetrable for us. But I agree with your concern and think staff's already on it and perhaps still serve as a reminder if we can find a way to do this, that would be of value because it I would agree delaying a year and a half takes a lot of the value of this away. How can you improve your service if you have that delayed response? So with that, one more time to my call. I'm sorry, go ahead, chief.
My understanding is that this fall we'll have our RIPA data from July one to December thirty first. So six months or eight months after the December thirty first data.
I think that would be a huge improvement. I still would be curious if if it's not a huge imposition or too difficult, I'd be curious how these other cities are doing this. There may be some issues about that, but but that would be something to good to hear about at some point. But at any rate, let me ask my colleagues one more time. Any last thing in this for move to our next item? Not seeing any hands. I'd like to suggest it is now twenty after nine. We've been here since six. Would you be open to about a ten minute break before we go to our the last part of our agenda? I'm sorry for the people waiting, but I think we could all use a short break. So it is twenty after about. We'll see. We'll be back together at nine thirty and continue.
Everybody do a tick check while you're out.
Yeah.
I was doing that during the presentation. Oh, my God.
All right. Well, welcome back everybody. It is nine 30 and we all showed up at exactly the same time and right on time. Nicely done. Uh, so that completes item 11 being brings us now to a light of 11 C, uh, which this is a discussion of potential ordinance authorizing city council appeals approvals under zoning ordinance. Uh, so I'll ask for the staff presentation on this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Lamb and Council. Uh, this is Noah House, you know, I'm the director for the city. Uh, and they had him before the commission is a consideration of, uh, some potential ordinance changes to the appeal as the mayor stated. And it's response to, uh, the decision on April 26th of this year when, uh, community development department staff presented an ordinance to the council, which included a suite of proposed changes to the land use code implementing several general plan and housing element policies and programs. Uh, specifically housing element program two dash six, directed the removal of the use permit requirement for multifamily housing in the neighborhood urban zoning district. Um, staff had also included another recommended change stream similarly remove the use permit requirement for apartment uh, developments in the neighborhood medium zoning district. And it's worth noting that under both of these changes, designer view approval from the planning commission at a fully noticed public hearing would remain. Um, in the discussion of this element of the ordinance, the majority of the city council expressed some concern and desire to explore options to mitigate the potential for problematic projects to move forward without, um, some additional public input. And there, there was a request, uh, to further discuss a few items or options. I'm sorry. One of them was an option to not implement housing element program two dash six. Uh, and another was, uh, to elevate all multifamily housing design review decisions to the city council. Uh, as was indicated at the hearing by staff, one of the goals, um, to implement the program was to assist in the adoption and approval of the pending how, uh, six cycle housing element by the state. Uh, and it's still staff's position that, uh, moving forward to implement the program is the most appropriate action. Um, and so while, uh, we saw the implementing of the, the housing element two dash six as an important step, uh, given the concerns raised, we wanted to, uh, kind of raise a third option that may address some of the concerns uh, that the council identified. And so in looking at the current appeal process, um, well, it's actually stepping back. It's very common in jurisdictions throughout the state for the appeal chapter to include a provision. I'm sorry, the appeal chapter of the municipal code to include a provision that allows the city council to appeal any land use decision of a lower decision-making authority. So whether that would be the director, uh, zoning administrator or the planning commission. Uh, and this exists in the town of Windsor and the city of Sonoma currently. Um, and they're generally intended to ensure that decisions that are kind of identified are deemed to have a significant or material impact on the quality of life. The members of a community are thoroughly vetted and decided by those directly elected to represent the community members. And so given the direction that we received from the council, staff has, uh, proposed some language to create a process for a majority of the council to appeal any land use decision of a lower making body um, within the typical appeal timeframe. And we thought that this would be, uh, basically a way to hopefully give the councils the comfort level with approving the program two dash six, but then also addressing the needs and, uh, concerns that were voiced during that, that, um, discussion. And also something that is frankly not atypical, uh, of policies throughout the city, or I'm sorry, throughout the state uh, regarding appeals. Um, so staff also included the current language. It's worth noting that there is a, an option that allows the council to do that currently uh, in section 1784050, uh, identified as a directed referral. Uh, and staff's review of that language, it is, um, I would say that language is much more atypical and much more subjective. And so we are recommending the updated language that was included in the report to kind of bring that process more in line and in keeping with standard, uh, appeal processes throughout the state and also to identify what the motivating factor should be, to support such an appeal or to motivate such an appeal by a majority of the council. And then it's worth noting, uh, lastly, we did receive a, a comment letter, public comment letter from an, uh, organization called YMB Law. Uh, and it's just worth noting that those comments actually do not apply directly to this process. Uh, they were talking about ensuring that the ministerial review and decision-making authority um, for some state mandated processes for housing, uh, remain. And, um, this council has very clearly committed, uh, and staff has supported that in, uh, ministerial actions being decided at the staff level. And so, uh, we recognize their concerns, but it's kind of an apple to oranges comparison. And so, um, that commitment already exists and that would not be affected in any way by anything that's before the council. So with that, I conclude my presentation. I apologize. It didn't. I did not put together, uh, slides this evening. I thought it'd be a relatively quick discussion. And so I did not do that. I apologize.
Well, you know, that's kind of a win-win situation too. I think it could be cut either way. So with that, uh, I will turn it to the council. See if we have any questions for staff. And council member sparks. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I, I found the language in our current municipal code to be a little bit opaque about the direct, uh, directed referral. Can you just explain how that previously, like how what we're doing, what we're proposing tonight would, would change what's, I guess, just explain a little more about what's already there that we're changing it from.
Yeah, thank you, uh, council member. So the directed referral process, um, essentially allows any council member to appeal any decision, uh, almost for any reason. And I didn't have to pull the code language and review it specifically because it's been a little while since I wrote the report. But it was atypical and, and it didn't provide any context for why or how that would happen. Uh, and that's very problematic for the staff standpoint, um, for numerous reasons. Um, I'm happy to elaborate if, if needed beyond what's in the report, but, uh, if, if, I mean, that's a very significant thing to do for, for a, uh, one, um, body, even if it is an elected body to make an appeal, uh, itself. And, and then it does create a whole, another layer of decision-making, uh, process. We do feel that, uh, reflecting back to the previous discussion that if all design review for multifamily was elevated to the, uh, council decision, uh, whereas right now it's just a planning commission, uh, decision, we do feel that would probably be viewed by the state as adding an impediment. Uh, and so we wanted to get away from those types of things. And, um, the current language, while it's existing and it's, and it's related to appeals and it does not appear to be have abused it in any way, have been abused in any way. It does have the potential for abuse frankly, uh, and so we would, from the staff perspective. And so we would like to just clarify that it, the current proposed language would require a majority of the council to vote to, um, appeal a decision for a low, from a lower making body, uh, at their next, uh, at the decision-making meeting. So there's standard meeting that occurs after that, uh, decision is made. Um, so in this case, the previous planning commission meeting that we held, uh, last week would then, this would be the opportunity during the, uh, items for future agenda where the council would raise a discussion point for that in theory, because they would have heard so much concern from the community members about the decision. And then they, they would use that opportunity to direct staff to put it on the next available agenda for a review by them. And those reviews under appeals are called de novo. Uh, and under legal terms, what that means is it's a do-over essentially. So it is a fresh decision-making review. It allows new conditions to be put if the, if the decision to approve is upheld. Or if it was a denial and the decision to denial would be upheld, it's, it's kind of a fresh reason. Or obviously the decision could be overturned as well.
Thank you.
All right. I've got a council member for it next.
Thank you. Um, no, I just had a question about kind of how this, or, or maybe this is for Damian. I'm not sure about how this would be implemented in. So in that, uh, new agenda items time on the agenda, do we then have a conversation about whether to agendize this, you know, whether to grant this appeal? Like for instance, suppose I wanted to appeal decision of a planning commission, I would say at the council meeting. You know, at that, at that time, I think that the council should take up this as a de novo, um, you know, uh, consideration. But, but I'm, I'm concerned about talking about the issue at that point when it wasn't on the agenda. Um, so, uh, maybe this is for, for John. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, this, this does, that issue does come up because it's a Brown Act issue. If you don't have, if, if the item is not actually listed on the agenda, um, there is a mechanism under the Brown Act that gives the council the authority to add an item to a future agenda. So we would, we would be attempted to characterize what action the council is taking to, to, to appeal this as being a, a, an action to add an item to a future agenda. Uh, but we would counsel you not to discuss the, the merits of the item. So it's going to be a bit of a difficult conversation, right? A council member will have to bring it up and, and there can't be a lot of discussion about it and, and you need three votes to, 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 to bring it back in a future meeting as an appeal.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Vice Mayor Hardy.
Uh, thank you for that, Ben. I, I was headed in the same direction. And similarly, um, we had, um, dealt with a process for future agenda items about using the city manager and all that. How is that going to work with this when it sounds like we have to make this request at our next regularly scheduled meeting? Um, anybody's thoughts on that?
Actually, just, Mr. Mayor, and just to make a comment, it, it, if I'm correct about this, the way staff proposed it, it has to be, it, it has to be appealed by the council within 30 days of the action. Uh, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be at the next council meeting, but the appeal would be brought, if, if you did appeal it, if the council appealed it, it would be brought back at your next meeting.
That's correct. It is a 30 day timeline and I apologize for misspeaking, but we would, because appeals, the goal of appeals is to be timely. So we would look to have, uh, some direction at least on that to bring it back.
So is this an occasion then that we would, in the future agenda items, we would be able to go out of our processes and ask the rest of the council, um, if we could appeal this?
Yeah, I was a, go ahead, John or Damian.
Yes, um, Vice Mayor Harvey, that I was, I was envisioning, I think, um, you know, in talking about this internally, at least conceptually that in, in action like this would be, you know, um, in, in most cases it would be already brought to planning commission and it would just be a request to bring it to council. Whatever that is. And so to be more directly answer your question, it would be different than the process of sort of generally agendizing things um, in the future that we discussed earlier was how I think we were envisioning it. Cause you, they're, they're probably with the 30 day appeal timeline, there probably wouldn't be a lot of time to it, and to talk about it. And even if, even if there were, um, something horrendous project that elicited this kind of response that the council wanted to see it, it probably wouldn't really matter anyway, um, because it needs to be brought forward for the community.
Well, there's a possibility that we wouldn't meet that 30 days if we, if the planning commission met and it, and we brought it up on our second meeting and it happened to be a long month. And then it couldn't get agendized till the second or the first Tuesday, it, it might process it out longer than 30 days. Have you guys?
So this is just, uh, just, this is just conceptual language that was formulated by staff in response to hopefully addressing the concern while also allowing the adopted policy to move forward from the housing element. So these are good feedback, but, uh, this language is not, this isn't the, not the ordinance itself.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, yeah, for the vice mayor's interest, this is just a suggested timeframe. If there was an interest in going longer for most of the council, I think that's possible. But I think at least from what I heard from staff too, was a logical feeling that this shouldn't be something and just sit out there forever. And at a late date, one of us can then ask for this. And in terms of the question, I thought you were kind of asking, how does this work? Is it like asking for a new agenda item? We have a process for new agenda items only because, because they're new, they might incur staff time and we try to be careful of that. That's the reason for this process. This may have some staff time, but basically the staff report's done.
Okay.
We're just asking for a de novo action under revisit it potentially at the council level. So although it's an additional thing to agendize, it shouldn't be a lot of staff research. So in that one aspect, hopefully it's simpler.
Okay. If that's how you see it, that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Well, I'll ask the rest of you to think about. So I'm seeing it now. We always try to be careful of unintended consequences because you know how they come around. So I'm just going to start right over again. I see council member sparks.
Thank you. I, I'm still feeling a little uncomfortable with the, the, the fact that we would need to explain our reasoning for what, you know, if you're, you, you would necessarily have to talk a little bit about what the, what the appeal is in order to explain, there, there just would have to be some discussion about it during this, um, requesting new agenda items stage. And that makes me a little uncomfortable. Um, so I'm wondering, would it be just spitballing here, would it be possible to have the process be something like, you know, a council member can request that, um, the mayor and the city manager place this on the next agenda to discuss whether to seek an appeal so that instead of having to bring it during the new agenda items phase, any council member could just write a letter to, to the mayor and the city manager, and then that would trigger it to be placed on the next agenda, not, not as an appeal, but just as a, a placeholder discussion. We're going to, we're going to have a quick discussion about whether or not to appeal this decision. That would also speed up the timeline a little bit.
Trying to find, there was some language in here. I think we could probably have some very general language in response to that. I, I hear what you're getting at, and I wonder if this is something we could work through with, uh, our city attorney. There's language in here that the policies are generally intend to ensure decisions are deemed to have a significant or material impact on the quality of life of members of the community are thoroughly vetted, decided by those directly elected to represent the community members. That could be the generic request that a council member uses to raise this. And if there's an interest to go any farther than that, this is something you could vet ahead of time with Mr., any of us could vet ahead of time with Mr. Barker. And that would probably be the smart thing to do, just to make sure, because there's always the temptation. Just to make sure, because there's always the temptation to explain your reasoning more thoroughly. And I'm sure it's easy to cross that line. But that would keep it simple.
Yeah, I I I think that the the draft language that's in the that that staff proposed. Talks about there being a presumption that there's just a generalized reason for the appeal. The purpose of having that is to. Is to prevent the council members from stating their grounds for or having to state their grounds for appealing. Because if you do that, then you 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 could be seen as biasing yourself for the future hearing. So so the intention is really to keep the the discussion limited. And have the ability for a council member to say this is I I'm appealing in the public interest sort of period. And and then the decision is made by the council whether or not to to grant the appeal. At a future council meeting, I don't see any problem with. Having a requirement that that an individual council member that desires to appeal. Have the council consider an appeal, has to submit something ahead of the meeting. So it's agendized. That would actually be. Be helpful and could could avoid some Brown Act issues during the meeting. So that that would be worthwhile. It's just maybe more process than the council would want to include.
So let me ask you, Mr. Barker, would you be able then? We already have like. There was a general. Language from staff in this. Would you could you, since this is not an ordinance before us tonight, but it's merely direction for staff to go then craft a final. Would you be able to develop some general language for us to use that would be appropriate working with the community development staff? For this purpose, so we could avoid this concern about. Potentially crossing that brown app line.
Yes, we we could definitely do that. And if the council desires us to have some options around submitting it ahead of time. Please let us know and we can. We can include an option around that as well. That could be. Implemented or included in the language.
All right, well. Good, Mr. Ford, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So. I think an option to submit ahead of time to get it agendized so that. So that you could explain your reasoning makes sense. But given that our planning commission sometimes meets the night before the city council. I would not like to make that a requirement because then that's going to slow down the process by two weeks or. Three weeks potentially. So I think that. Something where if it's not an agendized item, if it's coming up at the new agenda items. Point in the agenda, then. Then perhaps all that's permitted is to say what's in what's in this draft ordinance, you know. I I believe that council should appeal, should take up. The approval of this project because I have concern that this action may have significant and or material effects on the quality of life of the citizens. And leave it at that so that the only projects that can be. Granted a future agenda item under that process are those that are. Apparent without a discussion. To need to rise to that level apparent to at least three members of the council. Without a discussion, if you. If you have to make a case that it should be agendized. Then it need then that discussion needs to be agendized.
Yeah, I. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Harvey, did you want to take another swing at this or Vice Mayor Harvey? At the moment, no, okay.
It's all it's all gets a little bit confusing and to get it get it right, but. I I get the the concept. And I think that the concept. Addresses our original concerns.
Well, you know, we're moving past questions now. I think we're beginning to do some problem solving. So. I'll ask us to hold off for a minute. Open this to public comment and then maybe we can come back and. See where we're at and nail this down a little better. If we could have public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Callum Weeks, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'll keep my remarks relatively brief as it is a late hour and I don't want to keep us too long. And you'll have to forgive the immediate comparison, but this really strikes me as as kind of. Not dissimilar from Lucy pulling the ball out from, you know, Charlie Brown seconds before he's about to kick the ball. You know, one of our our greatest concerns is with this type of policy is that if invoked. It could further delay. The timeline for a housing development project to move forward. And as all of you are, I'm certainly well aware at this point. Lengthy development timelines have, you know, largely contributed to the affordability problem, not in, you know, exclusively, but they are. One major component that is, you know. Often bogged down these projects and in, you know, more extreme cases led to. Their ultimate demise. So I I guess what I would want to encourage you and urge you to think about tonight is is, you know, what can we do? And I think, you know, Councilmember Burns was already kind of on the the right direction and and so was Councilmember Sparks. What can we do to make sure if you do need? Or feel that you need this policy baked into kind of your code in order to feel comfortable. What can we do to make sure that we expedite this as much as possible? These delays are are just often, you know, a death knell to to projects and. And our biggest concern is that this could be used. In in a way that that would be potentially problematic for future housing development and. And perhaps I'm wrong, perhaps I'm missing the mark. I I have communicated somewhat with staff. Trying to get a better understanding, a better sense of of, you know, what the general direction is here, but. You know, I think generally speaking, what what our kind of principles are, especially as it comes to. You know, trying to streamline multifamily housing as as much as we, you know, possibly can removing some of these. Ownerless discretionary requirements and and replacing them with objective zoning standards so that, you know, we can ensure that. All development that's built is is built with a certain level of predictabilities that everyone in the community can feel comfortable. With what's being designed and what's being presented to them. And certainly we want that as well. We are just trying to do our best right now to make sure we shine a light on any sort of processes that might. Be utilized to to, you know, further delay desperately needed affordable housing and then. Just housing generally speaking, because as you know, we often noted. It's it's not just more housing, it's not just. More affordable housing, it's more diverse housing as well. And. And so I I would just caution you as you, you know, proceed with this conversation to to really. Be mindful about the unintended consequences, as I think Mayor Landman noted earlier today. And with that, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your service and I look forward to discussion.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Weeks, for sitting through Cal a long meeting. I recognize I was thinking of you out there. Sorry about that. I'll go to Mr. Ford.
Thank you. I I just want to say I support the general direction of this. Staff proposal that they came up with to try to meet the the needs that the council identified at the last meeting. And I just want to point out it's replacing a much more problematic. Appeal process that's currently in the code with one that's much harder to activate. So so this action would actually make it harder. To hold up a project, not easier. Thanks.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor Hardy.
Yes, thank you for that, Councilmember Ford. I I agree with you. The other one looked a little. Little bit hard and it and it seemed like one person. You know, kind of to to address the concerns from from the public that were raised. In. Housing developments happen to be one of those things. That people come out and we get lots and lots of people on them and. One of the things that we're always trying to encourage. Is we are trying to be inclusive and include those comments. And sometimes we can do some things to change that and sometimes. We can't do things to change that. I've seen I've seen both happen. So as far as predictability. People that live in the community need to. Know that they can predict also what is going to be built next to them. So I find it to be a little bit of a balance. There's a balance between. Getting housing out there and a balance to the. The people that are already living here and and we have to do. The best we can, which is somewhat why, you know, we're in these positions as elected officials. To kind of take in that input and and do the best we can. From what I've seen, we have more than met. Approving projects and having entitlements out there. And what we've seen is not. Really our delays, but more we approve and entitled things and in some instances. It's been, you know, a decade before they actually build. So, you know, again, it's it it's all a balance, but we've been pretty good. About, you know, taking care of. Listening to what people have to say, both the developers as well as the citizens because. We have in the past, you know, given. A lot of things to to developers that they've requested. So. So again, I think it's that balance. I think that this kind of steps us. In the right direction and and certainly addresses. My concern if we have a problematic project. I'm hoping we won't have any, but you just don't know. So thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, I'll just comment and say. Cal, I hear your comments and I kind of agree with the concern. I I'm not sure if it will be as problematic as you're worried about though. Because I think this to be a very unusual use case. I think this is more akin to a. Heavy weapon that most people wouldn't want to wield unless it was a very rare circumstance where there was some value to it. Because I do think in some cases, if this is both, there might be a good reason for it. So with that, and I think it's much superior than. Trying to move all decisions in this away besides the concerns from a state perspective, there's just not a need for that to move all. Planning Commission review of these items because most of the time. These are. Not problematic decisions whatsoever. But it is a level of comfort to have something. Where the public knows, okay, you're the people responsible. We elected you. And you'll be looking this if need be. So it's a nice thing to have in the back pocket there, I think. I do think I hear your concerns about it potentially slowing things down. I would like to keep it as simple as possible so it can go quickly. I think that's one reason why I didn't push back when staff suggested. Just thirty days. I wondered if that might occasionally be a little short, but I thought. I think that puts the impetus in us as council members if. We see something that's problematic or more likely if we're hearing it from the public to probably both or happen concurrently. That we move with some alacrity and get it done. And bring this forward. So from the process of keeping it simple, I I'd simply like to just say we follow. The staff recommendation for this with the addition of asking Mr. Barker to work with community development staff. And develop that. Stock. Concern that we can use to bring this up and request for a review. That Councilmember Sparks rather alertly pointed out. Because that will prevent us from getting into any Brown Act issues. So. That would be my suggestion at least. I don't worry you're at. I'd love to hear that. And we have one other thing. Just when you thought we were almost and we have one other thing to deal with this too. The issue of whether we extend the. Removal of use permits to the neighborhood median. Medium zone. Has to be determined to. So that unlike the neighborhood urban, that was essentially something we were locked into. To our housing plan. But this is was merely a suggestion. So that's up to us to determine tonight too. So I'd ask you in our next round of comments if we could, one, see if we're comfortable with where we're going. With the approval process or the revisiting process. And then just give us your individual direction if you want to support removing. The use permit or not for the NM zones. And Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand up. Why don't you lead us on this?
Sure, and yes, I'm supportive of extending this to the NM zone. I think that a housing use. Sort of already is consistent with residential zone. So. I'm comfortable removing that use permit. As far as the direction on everything else. I do not think that we're moving in the right direction with this, but I sort of said everything I had to say about it last meeting. So I won't. Belabor that point any longer.
All right, Councilmember Ford.
I just wanted to address briefly the timeline issue in the draft language. It's the decision to appeal that must be made within thirty days, not the appeal itself. That's just the decision to appeal. So. That thirty days does not feel over too long at all to me. We better be able to do that in two meetings. So. On the question of the NM zone, I I would support removing the use permit. Requirement for that use because it is already an appropriate use for for that. Zone and the process as the staff explained it to us, it just duplicates work. It it. It's basically all the same material that goes into the use permit as into the. The regular entitlement process. Thanks.
All right. Vice Mayor Harvey, any comments, any direction?
Um, I I'm comfortable with removing the use permit. For NM and and you.
And in in terms of the. Excuse me, it's getting late and I'm getting into senior moment, Bill, and the appeal process. Are you comfortable with that as we described?
I am comfortable with that as described.
All right. Well, my personal thing tonight, I I'm comfortable that is described. I would not be supporting moving to the NM zone. Simply because, as I've stated before, we've moved. Significantly in everything. And if there isn't. A crushing need to do this, I don't see it, particularly because I see a huge neighborhood urban I see is a good fit. For thirty five foot buildings. I'm not as sure about neighborhood meeting. I think it's more likely to be problematic, but. Well, since we have this ability for review. I can live with it. So. It does make sense. I'll join you in that. So if somebody wants to make a motion for both. If we're ready to do that, I think perhaps we could vote on this.
I just asked, so the the motion would be to introduce the ordinance? Do we have enough of it?
Yeah, so there is.
About the ordinance to do that?
There is no ordinance. So I I would say a motion is not necessary. So just based on what staff has heard, we will be returning with with an ordinance to update the code to remove. And this will be a draft ordinance that will be reviewed again and and considered. By the planning commission and the council because the appeal process is changing. And it will be to remove the use permit requirement for multifamily housing in the neighborhood medium and neighborhood urban zoning districts. As well as to update the appeal language to allow. City council member, a majority of the city council to appeal decisions of lower bodies. Indicating that they would like to do so either verbally at the next meeting or in a letter written. And I do agree that having both of those options is the most expeditious way to allow that decision process to start. And then it'll go through the ordinance process and the planning commission and city council will have the ability to make. Additional changes as we go through that process, but that's what staff has heard this evening, the direction.
All right, so that direction sound good to the council? Excellent. Well, thank you very much for that report and thank you, council for that. So that completes regular agenda item C. This brings us to our last item on the regular agenda, which is IMD. And this is an opposition letter for AV. Twenty eleven as well as a support letter for Cal City's budget priorities. And I'll ask who's going to be presenting this for staff.
Mayor, I'll take that one. So. Just I'll be as brief as possible. So normally Cal Cities. Sends us. These action alerts, their requests for urgent action. We are a member of Cal Cities in accordance with the city council rules. If if. If. It's an urgent request. In other words, we don't have time for the next city council meeting. Then the mayor can on behalf of the city. Issue letters consistent with the with the Cal Cities direction, opposition or support for something. In this case, we got a urgent request, but it was. It wasn't so urgent that we couldn't get the council to have a conversation about it. So one is AV twenty eleven. And AV twenty eleven is opposed by the league. It's opposed, it's pending bill opposed primarily because it expands. Basically, it expands ministerial type housing development to other zones. Other non-residential zones. So it's like SB thirty five. But in other areas. Of the city, other zoned areas. It also. Restricts the city's planning ability to restrict certain areas for commercial and retail activity. Regardless of whether housing use is compatible. So these are the reasons why. Cal Cities is opposing it. And like I said before, it's it would make it a ministerial action. So no, no public review. So that's one of the items. The other is the Cal Cities budget priorities. The state, as you know, I think has a has a large surplus. This year and so Cal Cities was asking for some assistance in three areas. One is for the creation of a housing and economic development program, which is essentially like, um, uh, as I understand it, a grant program that helps in the ways that redeveloped formerly redevelopment used to help. Um, the details are not entirely clear to me. I think they would vet that out if, um, you know, as, if they were to include it in the budget, the state budget. Um, and then uh payback for um state mandated programs. Currently under state law, the state's required to pay local jurisdictions for making them do stuff that they don't reimburse for. And normally the state just says, there's no, there's no local costs. They kind of wave their arms around them. So there's no local cost, but there always are um to implement state mandates. And um the state controller's office does track this stuff. Um, and it's, uh, I think for Katati, if the state were to pay back local jurisdictions for state mandated costs, I mean, for, for Katati, it'd be about eighty, I think eighty-three thousand dollars was the estimate from the league. And then lastly, um, providing additional money for um the organic waste recycling programs and SP thirteen-three implementation costs. There's a, a statewide need for assistance from cities apparently. So those are the three bu- budget priorities that are being performed. That'll be. And without, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bidford. We take questions, I will note that it is ten, nine minutes after ten, I believe at ten o'clock. By our council rules, we're supposed to stop and see to actually have a motion to continue the meet. Um, so the question is if we want to continue the meeting, which I'm hoping we will, because we're getting there. Or if uh we wish to put it off to a, to the next meeting. So if there's
near the meeting?
Well, okay, so I'll take a motion now, but before we vote, I want to open it to public comments. So, so I have a motion to continue the meeting. Uh, I'm open to any second on that.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Ford. Let's just go very quickly and see if there's any public comment on this, since it is an action item.
If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
And I'll bring this back. If there's no discussion from the council, and I'm not seeing any hands, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Landman?
Yes, thank you. And I would say if we ever revisit our council rules in the next few years, we might want to bump this one to eleven, I think. Just a thought. We run into this a lot. So, all right. So moving forward, we were just about to ask questions. I'll open to questions uh from anybody on these two Cal Cities items. Councilmember Ford?
Just one quick question there. If I, I found some typos in the draft letter, should I just send those to, to just city manager Obed?
If they're incredibly amusing, I'm going to encourage you to say them right now. But if they're just simple typos, that, that would be great.
No, it's just like repeated word or a slight misspelling, things like that.
Perfect. Thank you. That would be great.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, let's see. So we've asked our questions. I'm going to open this again to public comment.
If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right. Well, so we have that. I'll bring it back. Councilman Ford, I see your hands up. Did you have more discussion or a question, or were you going to make a motion?
Sorry, I forgot to take it down, but I am happy to make a motion to um, to approve uh sending a letter to oppose AB twenty-eleven and to support the, and a separate uh to support the, the Cal Cities budget priorities.
I would second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion, a second from Councilmember Ford and Vice Mayor Harvey. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And that's a yes. Thank you, council. All right, that completes our regular agenda, and we move on now to our city managers' report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. So um we heard tonight earlier about the prescription drug takeback day. So we gathered on April thirtieth, um, uh, we gathered thirty-four pounds uh this time with the DEA prescription drug takeback in a day. So that was um good work in a day. Um, we do have, um, uh, we had a change in the mobile testing. So the mobile testing that, that's the same Joseph's parking ride, it's still um Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And it is uh eight AM to four PM. The change though is now that they have, in addition to testing, they do doctor consults onsite. And I think it's um, I think it's like virtual, you know, like a teledoc type system. And can also, um, for people that qualify, can also uh prescribe antiviral medication. So, um, so they're doing more than testing now. Just recently, they switched to that. Uh, just wanted to uh let the council know that for our water and sewer um customers, we have been you, you know, through COVID, there's been a lot of different ways that people can get assistance themselves. They can apply numerous different, for numerous different programs to get um funding to help pay their utility bills, including water and sewer. Uh, one of the things that we've been pursuing is some direct uh trying to get direct reimbursement through the state for our customers. Because that's a, it's a much more efficient way than having everyone apply separately to a state process that might be confusing to them. So, um, so we have been working with the state. Our admin services department was able to get um ninety thousand dollars for our water customers and um fifty-nine thousand dollars for our sewer customers. These are past due customers, customers that weren't able to pay their bills for whatever reason. And um so we get, we apply for them sort of en masse. We get the funding and we apply it to their accounts directly and we send them a letter saying, you know, um, we applied money to your account. So you don't need to pay it, or you know, it pays off at least part of it. So, um, there's that. And then there's also a new program that's starting up in June third that will get the word out on more. But it's a, it's for lower income households. It's a water assistance program. It's the latest in a line of programs to help people pay their um rent or utilities. So this is the latest one. Um, and then West Side Street Project, we are nearing completion with that. Slurry ceiling was done on West Katati Avenue and Gilman Ranch Road this uh just today, actually. And signing and striping is going to be following soon with the new barrier at the bottom of West School Street. And um, and then we're going to be wrapping that project up. We're also working on our um street maintenance project. And so this is um some slurry ceiling paving. That's going to be later this summer. It's over three miles of streets. Um, we're, we're also going to be again working on, um, assuming the budget gets adopted, working on the street reconstruction project. So next year, we'd be looking at the um so-called Quick Strike project, which is um La Plaza and West Sierra. Not so quick, but that's what they call it. Anyway, um, so hopefully that'll all get reconstructed next year. And then the, um, then a bunch of other roads are slated for reconstruction as well. So, um, it's a bunch going on there for wayfinding signs. We, um, the signs are being fabricated, not the, um, not the interpretive sign that still has to come back to council, but the other ones are being fabricated now. And um based on timeframes, it looks like they'll be installed in July, as well, as well as some lighting for the kiosks. And at that point, we'll be essentially done with the kiosks, um, pending the interpretive sign. The Pocket Park in the Guinness Marsh Pathway, the council did approve that construction agreement today. So, um, so those contracts or, or those contractors are expected to get going uh in June. And then, um, on the housing element, so we recently had a series of public meetings, including on May seventeenth at Katati Coffee and May eighteenth in the Katati Room. Um, that included Spanish translation onsite there. Um, in addition for, um, in addition to those two more recent meetings, we're also um holding uh additional public meetings on June first and eighth at the Katati Farmers Market for people that have input on the housing element. And then following up these opportunities is a joint session of the council and planning commission coming up on June fourteenth, starting at four PM. And then in August, the draft housing element would be expected, we're expecting the draft housing element to be ready for a thirty-day public review prior to final approvals by the city. And then, um, just to update, the gas station prohibition went to planning commission in May, and um we're expecting, we're expecting that back um before council on June twenty-eighth. So that's coming up. And then, um, also the, a workshop with the council on the herb agor- urban agriculture ordinance is uh currently planned for June thirtieth. And then, um, uh, this past Friday, we celebrated bike tour every day and connected to, connected with around thirty cyclists uh throughout the morning, including at least one of our council members. I hear, so, um, that was, that was good. We look forward to doing it again next year. Also, this past Friday, we had our last free youth day, um, the, of the spring season at the ranch, at the Runa Fuddy Ranch, hosted by Sandy Lo. We had over forty people there and um a lot of themed crafts for children, um journal making, ice cream uh party, and the Biblio of us from Snowmack County Library was there. And we're going to be um taking a break, but then doing more in the fall after all the summer camps and summer activities. Next Wednesday is the start of the twenty-twenty-two's uh farmer's market season. So every Wednesday through September, um, four-thirty to seven-thirty in La Plaza Park, and they feature music, beer, wine, fresh produce, um dinner and all sorts of other goods. So we hope to see you all there. Um, next Friday, we're hosting our free summer movie in the park, in La Plaza Park. And we'll be showing Encanto. Um, and the movie starts fifteen minutes after sunset, so that's probably around eight forty-five or so. Or maybe nine, depends where the, you know, where the sunset is these days. We're going to have lucky um popcorn there for purchase. And people are welcome to bring their own um picnic dinners and snacks. And then I'll stop there. Other than to say, we have a lot of um summer camps and other classes that are always filling up fast. So you can find out more on our social media or our um city website. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. And I see a question from Councilmember Sparks, followed by Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Um, Damian, for the uh, for the slurry seal that's going to be happening over the summer, do we have a plan in place to insist that the contractors uh keep the cars and vehicles off of the road long enough to her it all to dry?
Yes, it's one of the, it's one of the things that um we've been talking about, you know, trying to manage that and/or um, we've been talking about other methods to mitigate as well. But we recognize that for whatever, you know, for a variety of reasons, there can be vehicles on there um before it's fully cured, and we don't want to see that happen again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford, just go ahead.
Um, thank you. Thanks for the report. I, I just want to commend uh you and the staff who pursued the direct reimbursement for the utility um missing payments from the state. That was a brilliant solution. And um, I'm, yeah, proud of the city for taking that on on behalf of the residents.
That led my admin services department, Angela Corrigan. So you can thank her when you see her.
Great. Well do.
Yeah, I'll just ditto that. You know, I know the newspapers regularly look our, look at all of council meetings in all cities to report on what's going on. And there's been a lot of news where things report tonight, but this is one small thing I would hope they'd at least notice, because that's a very good action. And again, this came from our staff. I, I'll just say uh how impressed I am with how much is happening. This may be a little town and we may have a small staff, but gosh, if we don't get a lot done, and it's pretty apparent this summer. So congratulations to you all for that. All right. Well, if there's nothing further than we're just going to slide right over to city council member reports, and I'll see if anybody has anything to report this uh meeting. Councilmember Sparks, followed by Vice Mayor Harden.
Thank you. Um, just a brief update on what our ad hoc committee has been working on. And Susan and I have uh worked on developing a preliminary list of recommendations. Um, we kind of took all the recommendations we received from public meetings and sorted them into ideas that we're sort of ready to recommend and ask the count for the council's approval on, and then ideas that need a little bit more work. So we, we have a list of some things that are ready to go, and we've talked to Damian about them. And hopefully we'll be seeing those uh at a future council meeting, not too long in the future. Um, so that, that was all I really wanted to say about that. We did have a meeting of the education committee um last week. Um, I don't think there's anything so pressing that we need to talk about it too much at ten twenty PM. But um it was a good meeting and we're staying connected with them as usual.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Laura. The, the thing that I found very interesting about this meeting, a little bit different than the others, is there was awful lot of outward helping, uh, one group helping another with a lot of great ideas, which I thought was really very awesome. Um, so a couple of things. One, um, you know, was mentioned in our previous item about, um, you know, states, state mandates with no funding. Um, there was a new, um, new law passed, AB twelve-seventy-six, single-use food, wear, accessories, and standard condiments. And they passed this, and it apparently went into effect in January. And it, the requirement is for all jurisdictions in California must designate an enforcement agency by June first. And we're just finding out about this. And so, um,
Can we recommend the state?
Yeah. So, you know, who, who knows, there's some discussion about, you know, maybe it could be handled with the county when, with the health department, when they're out, you know, servicing these companies. But anyways, it was a quite lively discussion, and needless to say, the small cities were extremely upset. Like we have nothing else better to do than, than to, um, to do this. But yes, yet another unfunded mandate. Um, and then lastly is the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency attended that. Um, just a little bit of, we just got a little bit of an update on um the plan and where we're at. Um, of course, there's been activity on the rate and fee update, um, more to come on that next month. But the key thing there was, um, Jay Jasper's is retiring. Um, and, um, so we were, um, we appointed Marcus Trotta at the principal hydrologist with Snowmaw Water as our plan manager for the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And we all thanked Jay. I think we'll get to see him one more time, but Jay is retiring. So that's all for tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. And I have nothing to report today. I'm going to wish Mr. Jasper's a best in retirement, a lot of years at the water agency, you know, a lot of hard work he certainly earned. So, uh, and I look forward to seeing what happens. Who is assigned to be the condiment police? That will be exciting to see. So that brings us then to uh item fourteen, which is public comment on non-action items. Let's see if we have any. We have zero attendees. I will just confirm that with our city clerk.
That is correct, Mayor Landman.
All right, then we are going to move forward. Uh, city managers, any, any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing other than the things we've talked about tonight.
All right. So that brings us to item sixteen, and this is the announcement of closed session, adjournment to closed session. Um, and we have two items for closed session tonight. One is a conference with legal counsel on potential litigation, one case. Uh, the other's conference with unrepresented employees uh in the ci- city designated representative, which in this case is the city manager. And the employee organization is the unrepresented group, and as always, will be back to adjourn afterwards. And if there's anything to report out, we will report out at that time. And we have no public here right now, so I am not going to ask for public comment, but I'll check with my colleagues, make sure you all have the other link. All right, I will see you on the other side then. Thank you.
All right, we're back. We have a quorum. Uh, we're back in closed session. We have nothing to announce. This takes us to our next item, which is item 18 adjournment. If there's no objection from the council, we are adjourned at 11:49. Thank you everybody for the long slog tonight. We'll see you next time.
Okay, thank you.
Good night. Goodbye.